Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this evening's work session. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we will begin with section 1.02 with our roll call. And Mrs. Widener, could you please do our roll call?
Mr. Dorr.
Yeah.
Mrs. Evans Brockett.
Here.
Dr. Halas.
Here.
Dr. Koller.
Yeah.
Mrs. Lofton.
Here.
Mrs. Mares.
Here.
Mrs. Roberts.
Here.
Dr. Weston.
Here.
White.
Here.
All present.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you very much, Mrs. Widener. That brings us on to section 1.03, approval of the agenda. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Okay, we had a motion and a couple seconds. Are there any questions about the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is approved, and that brings us on to section 1.04. We have a special topic presentation this evening, and I will, I believe, Mr. Dean or Mr. Miller is going to be providing this presentation for us. Is that correct? Dr. Russell? Okay, so I will turn it over to Mr. Miller to provide us with our safety update.
Thank you, Ms. Lofton. Good evening, everyone. Dr. Russell and I and Jim Weaver have prepared a safety review for you here. We're gonna just move through it. Invite you to take a good look at what we have here. We'll have a time at the end for some question and answers, unless you have something specific that you want to ask as we go along, please feel free. Let one of us know. Each of us will be going over particular parts of this review of the safety and where we're at in the district and things that we'll be doing moving ahead. Our agenda, just 10 items on our agenda here, as you can see, we'll go through some of the operations, the drills, and training that's been taking place, some of the funding streams that we've been able to take advantage of from the state. The Safe to Say report for the year end, obviously, the year runs through the end of this month, but with circumstances with COVID-19, those numbers have dropped significantly, so probably not going to see much more increase in that activity. The youth survey, which came out this spring, some injury reporting, as well as workers' comp claims, and then some comments on our coordination and our community activities. And then, as I said, we'll have some time for questions at the end. As you know, through Act 44, we're required to make this report to the board no later than the end of June each year. This public session will not include any specific details, however, we can discuss some items in executive session at a later time. Mr. Weaver continues to serve as our school safety coordinator as required by the state. He represents the district in the items listed below, along with a number of other issues that come up from time to time. He and I work in conjunction primarily with Mr. Clemmer on a number of these issues, and specifically as well with a good number of the different directors and chair people of different parts of the educational process, so that we can be compliant with Act 44 and the regulations that have been changing rapidly to date. So I can happily report to you that we are within compliance currently, and... Sorry about that. I don't know when I cut out. So our emergency operations plans to date are doing very well. They've been submitted to the county. We have two separate plans because we are in the Limerick Generating Station Response area. So this past year, we had a drill, and the schools that were involved were West, Evergreen, Skopak, and the district office. We did receive feedback from both the federal and the state reviewers, which were on-site at all of these locations. All those reviews were commendable with the performance and the compliance that we took part in. It worked very thoroughly. A big piece of that, obviously, is if we were to have an emergency at Limerick is to move our students during school hours potentially to the North Penn School District. I work very closely with Chris Dur, their emergency coordinator there at the district, and I'm sure as Dr. Russell does with Dr. Dietrich. And the entire plan went off without a problem that day, so we're very thankful that the plan, as it's laid out, works accordingly. And we have no reason to believe any of the other emergency plans for different emergencies that we might see within the district wouldn't operate in just the same fashion. Our emergency drills for this year have been held. We are compliant with the state's guidelines with regards to fire drills, weather drills, intruder drills, or the run-and-hide fight, as you might be familiar with it as. However, when we were dismissed for the COVID-19 issues, all of that drilling stopped. But up until that point, we were current. The folks at STA have been doing their drills with the buses. There was one scheduled to come up this March, however, because of the dismissal for COVID, obviously, that was not held. Somehow, I've lost the screen here, Dr. Russell.
That's me. I'm... Ms. Widener just uploaded the presentation. I wanted to make sure board members could access it. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Now uploaded. Thank you. Okay.
I'm still not seeing it. With regards to training and upcoming preparation, Mr. Haran and I both attended the SRO school was put on at the IU building, and the costs of that were covered by Homeland Security Task Force funding through the Montgomery County Department of Public Safety, so that was at no cost to us. Our partners in security, APCs, and a number of their agents, and they're working to also have a higher percentage of compliance as they move forward. One of the things we're working on currently, Dr. Boyd is leading our Threat Assessment Organization. The team met at the IU for some training in December. There were 12 of us. There was a cross-section of the district. At that time, we're going to continue to move forward with some additional training so that we can be up and running and be compliant at the beginning of the '21-'22 school year. The guidelines were just released this past December, so it is a quite large document, but we're working through it as best we can. We have found that there are a number of procedures and policies that we have in place that are already compliant. It's just a matter of lining those all up the way the state would like to look at them. As well with that, the trauma-informed approach to education. Ms. Smith is leading that up with us. Those documents were released in August. Again, quite a lot of work to do, but we are moving ahead with that with regards to integrating it into the curriculum. So progress being made in both those fronts as required by the state. Our funding this year through the Act 44 grant program, the Part A grant, we received a $45,000 meritorious award. As you can see here, that was divided between two specific projects. We were putting evacuation chairs and stairwells in every building, not every stairwell, but every building will have chairs available at a number of stairwells. Obviously, some of the larger buildings may not have them in each location. Along with that, we expanded our surveillance cameras and the coverage they have. After coming onboard in August and working with Mr. Clemmer and the BSGI group, we notified, I noticed some deficiencies in coverage, so we implemented some change and added some more cameras within that feature, and we're expanding that continually when the funds become available. Unfortunately, the Part B grant was a competitive piece. This year was handled quite differently by the state. Last year's program wasn't all or nothing. This year's was being able to been break down, broken down by specific objectives that you might want to complete within the Part B. We had an ask of just over $162,000. However, none of our objectives were granted through the state. One of those things is visitor management kiosk systems. You might know them as Raptor or Easy Lobby. There's a number of vendors out there that use them, but that's something we're really looking to expand upon. We have one system right now at the high school main entry, but we do want to have them in all the schools at some point in the future. And then you can see there's some of the other projects. We had discussed some lighting at crossings, some lighting on Campus Drive, and then updating our P.A. systems within the building. As we ran these drills, I mentioned earlier, a number of the staff and faculty said, especially in our large meeting areas, auditorium, gym, some of the large group construction facilities that we have, it's hard to hear. So that was one of the areas that we were trying to address as well. But again, as funding becomes available, we'll address these as we move forward. Safe to Say something. The program, which I believe you're all familiar with, an anonymous tip line available to all school districts and schools within the state. This year, we continue our training. Each year, the fifth grade is the lowest grade, which they're gearing the training towards and the opportunity to make reports to. Although anyone can make a report, our staff is instructing children in fifth-grade level and above. In the middle and high schools, obviously, the training is somewhat repetitive, so we're using various locations and social media to get the message out, whether it be hard signs in hallways or different applications, different presentations on school TV, announcements and the like. So it's open as well to the community. We have it on our website and on the Facebook and Twitter that we run periodically. You'll see notices for the Safe to Say tip. So here's a breakdown of the tips by school. Really not a lot of activity in the elementary schools. Evergreen had two tips, but the large portion of our tips come between the middle and high school. You can see here that West was, with 65, had the largest number of tips throughout the year. So they're broken down in the next couple of slides here, just to give you an idea of what they are. A few of them, you'll see, carry a no count, so these are types of events that are on the automatic app for reporting. However, we received nothing in those locations. Mind you, as you, as you look at these numbers, that the tip coming from the outside, that's who determines what that tip is classified as initially, so that's what drives some of these numbers. Occasionally, they'll be changed by the analyst at the Attorney General's Office, but typically they leave them the same. They're usually pretty consistent with what the tipster is trying to say. You'll notice here highlighted, one of our higher numbers is the bullying and cyberbullying, and that can come in an array of different sizes and shapes, as you're well aware, but there seem to be the interactions between mostly students or other students who observe, maybe a friend or a classmate who is potentially being targeted by others. So those are a lot, large number of our reports, and mostly handled in-house. The bold text indicates life-threatening issues that may come to us. Those particular types of reports will be also given automatically to the police authority having jurisdiction over the address if it can be ascertained. A number of times, the administrators and I, who receive these tips, will be using our in-house information systems to share with law enforcement and with the Attorney General's Office, the locations for these particular students, their residential addresses and the like. So another reason for us to keep that information as up-to-date as we can, and I commend our secretarial staff and the office staff in all of our buildings who do their very best to keep that in line. We've had very few problems with that when we go through these tips. So on the second page here, again, just the number of tips that are out there. One of them that we're constantly mindful of is the one there, number 24 tips with suicide or suicide ideation. So again, we don't see a lot of them coming in from the person themselves. We see it coming from a friend, someone who's close to the person who thinks that they might be in some form of trouble or might be thinking about self-harm. Fortunately for us, we've had none of these that have been substantiated, and we're thankful for that, but we're also thankful for the fact that 24 people in this particular year were mindful enough to make that report. Some of what you don't see here is that Safe to Say also encourages our tipsters to make a direct contact with an adult in their building, so there may be internal reports that don't necessarily come through Safe to Say, but our staffs are handling them on a daily basis as well. So we had a total of 142 reports as of today, beginning with July 1st of last year.
So Mr. Miller is going to offer me an opportunity to just touch base very briefly on the PACE survey, which we did receive this month. And I've called out, at the end of the report, they highlight the three top risk factors as determined by the results of our students in grade six, eight, 10, and 12, as well as the protective factors or the positives that resulted. So they call out the three greatest or highest for Perkyomen Valley. So we're going to talk a little bit more about this as part of our wellness committee, and I'm certain, once we have a little more time to go through it, we'll talk more about this as a board. But right now, one of the, the greatest risk factor among the three highest is this low commitment towards school. And I, I also called out on the next slide, for the county, that was also the highest risk factor for the county schools that participated in the PACE. In terms of protective factors, we see that for Perkyomen Valley, family attachment and opportunities for pro-social involvement are both two factors that are viewed as very positive in our school district. Family attachment is also very strong and a protective factor in Montgomery County, across Montgomery County schools. So we'll talk more about this report and some of the data as part of Wellness Committee, maybe even Safety and Operations, and then as a board, we'll give you a more thorough report on the PACE survey data next time we come together. So that's just a briefing right now.
Thank you, Dr. Russell. Just to cover some of the injuries related to not only our students, but also our employees through workers' compensation, just a chart here to show you where we're seeing a number of our issues. And speaking with the nursing group who provides the student numbers, nothing really out of the ordinary for a typical school year with our population. There were 53 reported incidents throughout the year. The highest numbers here were strains and sprains or potential for concussion, some fractures in there, a lot of cuts and bumps and scrapes, but nothing too significant. On the employee side, being struck or injured by, by another object or slips and falls continue to be the leading factors, and where we're seeing a number of our injuries. 26 total throughout the district for the year and our insurance company, based on the number of employees we have, as indicated to Mr. Weaver and I both, that our numbers are very good, considering the number of staff we have and the number of activities that are going on. So a lot of these can be addressed by being proactive with some training programs and some information on lifting, turning, and moving, and some other ones of these unfortunately come about as a result of working with some of our students, and injuries occur when there's an issue with non-compliance. So these are all things that we're teaching and educating our staff on daily, and we hope to keep our numbers low, as you see them here. Just wanted to touch base on a couple of the interactions we've had with the community since my time here back in late August of last year. I had the privilege of meeting with our state representatives, both Senator Minch and Representative Bradford, with regards to Act 44, some updates and some challenges that were presented earlier this year as it relates to the training for our security staff. As I mentioned to you earlier, Mike Haran and I both went through the training as certified school resource officers, even though we don't necessarily function in that role on a daily basis, the way the state law was written, you know, requires us to be trained to that level. So we had some conversations about reducing that requirement, making it a requirement for school safety and security as opposed to an actual school resource officer. I attended one of the largest classes. We had almost 60 people in the class, and the vast majority of the people within the class, that was Montgomery County and Delaware County, and a few from Bucks, all serve in the same roles that we do. So they weren't necessarily SROs, but because of this requirement, we're required to take the training at that level. So working to address that, and there have been some improvements as that moves forward, I think it'll get better for us. Excuse me. Each month, we have a job alike. If you could just go back to that, Dr. Russell.
Sorry.
We have a job alike. We have a conversation with other districts and the technical centers throughout, and share some ideas and things we were doing, so it's been very beneficial to us all. As well, we've been in touch with our emergency response agencies and law enforcement. Our MOUs are up to date, and we are working right before all this changes took place with COVID, with tabletop exercises in a couple of our schools with our county department of public safety. So we'll continue to do that as we're allowed to do so. Some of our objectives last year that we have met, as I mentioned earlier, the addition of surveillance cameras through several phases. We're working with BSGI to come in as soon as some of the restrictions are lifted to finish up some of the work that we've identified. We've increased our coverage at the high school and middle schools, as well as evening hours. We have not made it into the elementary schools yet. That's something I'm taking a serious look at as part of a patrol activity to get us started, and then we'll see if, you know, we're able to expand that as we move forward. We've increased the systems for the behavior support in our schools, the counseling services as well. You can see here the positions that were added and the programs that we have been able to implement, so we're very happy with the way that's moving forward. And Safety and Operations, as many of you know, we're talking about separating that to two separate meetings. At the moment, we're going to maintain them together until we get through this COVID issue. So just to check off some opportunities that we took advantage of this year, ensuring that all of our staff were trained, that was completed as a part of one of our objectives. Bringing in the position which you afforded to me, and I thank you for that. We've taken that off, and we're moving forward on a, on a regular basis. The cameras, as I mentioned, we're taking care of those as, as best we can. And while we didn't get, as I mentioned, the security in the evening hours at the elementary school, we are requiring those people who are using the buildings at off-hours, especially outside organization, to cover those hours with staff from APC through our contract with them. And we've been very good about monitoring that, and we've had a very good success rate. We've had very little issues when it comes to use of our facilities by outside vendors, so we're happy with the way we're moving forward. So there's a, that's a short summary of what's been going on in the district throughout this school year. Dr. Russell, Mr. Weaver and I are available to answer any of your questions at this point if someone would have a concern or question.
I have a question. This is Laura White. How are you, Ms. Miller?
I'm good, thank you. How are you, Ms. White?
Good, thank you. We had talked about it during one of our in-person Safety and Operations committee meetings, and you mentioned it a little bit earlier in your presentation with regards to the Safe to Say data and categories, that it represents only what was, was reported through that particular app and not actually the data that would have happened as a, as a result of discipline or reporting in the school setting directly to an administrator or teacher. And so I remember the conversation, if I remember correctly, we had talked about the importance of actually layering and overlapping those two, those two sets of, of reporting, so we could really get a full picture as to what's happening in each building, so we can kind of track a trend. And I think that this is going to be, you know, particularly important, you know, in the next school year, and then just in general going forward, with the particular categories in Safe to Say, such as, you know, bullying, hate speech, that type of thing. I think it's, I think it's really important to try to see a trend in pinpoint numbers with regards to these particular issues, so we can place measures in place and resources in place to try to, to try to eliminate some of, some of that in general.
Yeah, I would concur with you there, and we've had conversations in our administrative meetings about how we merge all of that data together, what the principals are seeing, what discipline is taking place within the schools outside of the Safe to Say. So the Safe to Say piece, we can download a disposition. Actually, the administrator in each building is required to do that within a reasonable period of time after the tip is received, so long as it's been resolved. And if we can match that up with data they have in-house, I agree with you that it would, would serve us well moving forward, especially with some of the programs I mentioned about the, the threat assessment and, and the trauma-informed education as well. So that'll, that'll serve to advance both of those, as well as, I'm sure, a number of other things within the building. So we're working on a way to get that together. Unfortunately, again, not to repeat myself again, but just the way COVID descended upon us, we don't, we didn't have the time to do that, so we're going to work ahead as we go.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It would be great to have a commitment to something like that in place. That way, when we review these, you know, criteria, these, these results, you know, month to month in, in safety meetings going forward, we'll actually be able to see a true picture of if we could get commitment from administration in all of the buildings to actually turn that information over to you with Safe to Say. I realize that's a little bit more heavy lifting probably than just the Safe to Say reporting, since it's not at PACE, but I, I think that although the Safe to Say is an excellent tool, I don't think that it's really giving us a full picture of the day-to-day strife that a lot of the kids feel, especially with regard to discrimination and hate speech, that type of thing.
Agreed. And as the survey, which Dr. Russell went over, just a little bit, the PACE survey, you know, taking some of that information as well and kind of layering all three of those sources for us as information coming in, I think will serve us well as we move ahead to initiate some of these other programs that we're talking about.
The other thing I'll add, just on your, to your point, Ms. White, I do appreciate you bringing that up. We have two other resources, if you will, that we can tap as we conclude the school year, and one would be some of the anecdotal data that's collected and gathered during the PBIS work in each of the buildings that have those frameworks implemented up and running. And the second is the Safe Schools Report that goes to the state, and that, that isn't compiled yet, but we did look at that last year, and we did see some connections. So that's something that's yet to come. That'll be available after July 1, and that may be another way that we can conduct the sort of analysis that you and Mr. Miller are talking about.
That's great. I appreciate that. I just feel like we're in a good spot right now. I know that COVID put a, put a damper on a lot of different, you know, gears or whatever, but I feel like this is allowing us to time to kind of really regroup and be poised to tackle a lot of the things that have been, you know, backburnered for the last couple of months or even the last year, and really start off the new year, you know, truly on a fresh slate with a lot of good initiatives to help, you know, stem some of the, some of the troubles we've been seeing that are recurring.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Looking forward to really researching that a little bit more and figuring out what we can do as a school district to make sure all students are as safe as they can be.
Any other questions?
Um, this is Judy Lofton. I do have a question just about the number of tips being reported, and I did find it interesting that the number was highest at West and about tripled what it was at East, and also that it was higher there than it was at the high school, even though their population is less than half. And I'm imagining that this is probably linked more to student awareness of the Safe to Say program than a true reflection of the issues that are happening at schools. That's just my initial guess of what that data tells us, but, you know, so I'm just curious if anybody's looking at why the communication around Safe to Say, excuse me, may have been more effective at West than it was in the other buildings. And what can be done to help students in their other building recognize that this is a tool that's available to them?
Yeah, again, we, we had a conversation about that just about the time of our change of plans about increasing our visibility with Safe to Say and getting the word out. I know Ms. Lester has been working to make sure it's, you know, in the forefront on our, our social media and we need to do a better job of making sure that our students are aware of it. So I can certainly do some more research into how Ms. Milligan and Mr. Creed made made it aware to their students as opposed to, you know, Dr. Kline and Mr. Molnar, and see what differences we can discover there. But yeah, I agree with you that I was kind of surprised by the differentiation in numbers when their population is rather close.
I also have a question. If you can scroll back up to the pie charts. And I just, it wasn't the first pie chart. I just, I wasn't certain what the difference was, why the first pie chart is not adding up to the same total that the other pie chart is. Can you help me understand just why how these two chart are different from each other?
When you, when you say totaling up, both, both of these are combined together for that one.
Oh, I see. Oh, I get it. Okay. Thank you.
There was just a lot of data to put on one screen.
Cross. So really, the pie pieces aren't necessarily representative from one chart to the next.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything else? Nothing. Dr. Russell, back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So section 1.5 comments from any, comments on any topic. Mrs. Widener, I did not see an email with any comments that were submitted prior to the meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct. I did not receive anything.
Okay, thank you. So just, oh, I'm sorry. What was that?
I just said, you're welcome.
Oh, thank you. So just as a reminder for our participants this, this evening, you may use the Q and A button at the bottom of the screen if you wish to submit a comment during the meeting, and we will read it aloud during the relevant section. If you want it to be associated with a specific section of the agenda or can something that's read aloud at the end. The one thing that I do ask is that you make sure that you list your name on the comment that you provide. We will not read aloud comments that are submitted anonymously. And also that you list which township or municipality in the district that you live in and/or if you don't live in the district, but you work in one of the buildings that you indicate which building that you work in. And with that, we'll move on to section two and on reports. And section 2.01 is our students' student liaison report. Mr. Marks and Ms. McGovern, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, we do. Thank you. And this is Sam. Since I'm a member of the class in 2020, I just thought it would be appropriate to point out that graduation is taking place this week, Wednesday and Thursday. Should be exciting. And also that there's, there's been a lot of cool events and videos and things leading up to it. I have a virtual music banquet soon. So there's just been a lot of stuff like that. And on behalf of the senior class, I just want to thank everyone for putting in the effort to recognize us and make us feel appreciated, even though this is definitely not a normal year. So thank you. And Maggie.
Hi, I just wanted to say the policy for the school board requires that we, we, we vote by the student form every year for the next student representative. So just in case this is our last meeting, I wanted to say thank you to the board for allowing me to be a part of this as a student representative, and I hope to see you all next year. So thank you.
So thank you very much, Ms. McGovern and Mr. Marks. It's really been really our great pleasure to have you serving on the board this year and being engaged in our discussions. And we wish you both wealth in the future. Mr. Marks, congratulations on graduating and and absolutely. And, and Ms. McGovern, we, we hope to see you again soon.
Thank you.
Moving on to section 2.02, the president's report. I don't have a whole lot to report this evening. The one thing that I do want to share is that there was a message that was sent out by PSBA indicating that Governor Wolf is indicating that we will be able to physically reopen in the fall. And the story that was sent out says, quote, schooling will look different, will said. You'll probably have more online learning and maybe less classroom learning. There might be fewer students in each classroom. End quote. And then it says, the Pennsylvania Department of Education is expected to release specific guidance early next week, that being this week. That will address issues like online learning, classroom capacity, operating school buses, sports and extracurricular activities as well as other logistics. So that was announced by Governor Wolf on Friday. So hopeful that we'll have some direction and guidance to work with this week as we work with our administration on planning for the upcoming school year and preparing our budget for the upcoming school year. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Russell for the superintendent's report.
Mrs. Lofton, I'd like to present my report next week after graduation.
Okay, that sounds great. So moving on to section 2.04 on the solicitors report. Mr. Subers, do you have a report this evening?
The only thing I would report is that we're working with the district regarding securing the necessary approvals for the high school athletic field improvement project. And we hope to have some positive movement there this week.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Subers. That brings us on to section 2.05 on board and district committee reports. The reports are attached at the bottom of the agenda item. Does anybody, any board member have any items from the committees that they would specifically want to call out or share with the board? Okay, I'm not hearing any comments. So we will move on to section three. Comments and consent agenda. Section 3.01, comments from the audience are accepted on any topic. I do not see any comments yet submitted through our Q and A. So we'll move on to section 3.02, which is consent agenda for the business meeting. Items that represent standard routine business of board are included in the consent agenda. Board members may request to have any items removed for discussion. The consent items as of June 1, 2020 are listed below. Additional agenda items may be added to the consent agenda during the work session meeting. And I'll just remind board members that as you go through your sections to indicate when items can be moved to consent. The following items will be added to the consent agenda for approval at the June 8, 2020 business meeting. 7.03, approval of leave of absence. 7.04, appointment of intern special education supervisor. 7.5, approval of professional appointments for 2027 programs. And 8.02, approval of leave of absence. Okay. That brings us on to section four on agenda. And I will, I'm sorry, on vacation. And I will turn it over to Dr. Coler.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. Item 4.01, our public comments on education. I don't believe I see anything in the Q and A. So we will move on to item 4.02. We will have Mrs. Smith joining us for an education update.
Good evening, everyone. Hope that you're all doing, doing well. We just have a couple of updates for you this evening for education. A little bit about PV virtual and some of our plans there. Short updates then about staffing and summer resources for this summer and moving into 2021. So just to, if you're not aware of what our current PV virtual looks like, it basically provides cyber courses to high school students. It could range from one course that they may be taking in conjunction with their regular courses or all the way up to being a full-time cyber student. They could be at home with a Chromebook and learning in their home. Or they could, when our building, when we're able to be in our buildings, they could be actually attending PVHS and going to our PVV classroom and doing their online learning there. Again, whether that's one period, two, or all of their courses. For this year, PVV was staffed by multiple teachers. It was added to one of the duty lists at the high school. So some teachers might have been in there one period, two periods, but that's how we fulfilled staffing that program this year to have some oversight. The third-party vendor that we use to provide the coursework this past year has been mainly Edgeseer. And there's lots of reasons why some of our high school students choose PVV. Sometimes it might be a course that we don't offer. Sometimes there's scheduling conflicts to fit everything in their course. And other times, it's social emotional reasons or other family situation reasons. They may choose to want to be in this particular environment. So we've been working, Mr. Stansom Marsh and I, to really take PVV and brand it a little bit more, prepare to market it a little bit more. We've certainly had these thoughts for many years, but our current environment has really kind of catapulted us forward to get some additional pieces in place. So thanks to Mrs. Lester, she's helped us create the logo that you see on the screen. We've worked up a mission statement and a vision statement that align with our district's mission and vision. And we're really working on a website, a brochure, to be able to market a little bit more. But what it, what is PVV? It is a tuition-free cyber school option for any student who resides in Perkyoma Valley School District. The course content and the instruction is provided through a third-party vendor. We are hoping to transition the majority of our coursework through the Montgomery Virtual Program, which is in conjunction with our IU this year, although we may still have some students who are comfortable and successful in using Edgeseer. It is, our intent is for it to be available to students in K to 12. We did have our first elementary student this past year in PVV. And it really is customizable to offer students with high-quality instruction, but flexibility based upon what their unique schedule or needs may be. And the added benefit or the selling point really is that students in this program maintain being a PV student. They maintain all those benefits of being part of our school communities, part of our athletics, those types of things, as well as getting that PV diploma, which they, you know, so look forward to. The next slide has just what some of the benefits are to participating in our own PV virtual versus maybe going to an external cyber charter school. And I just highlighted a couple of them for you here. It certainly is certified Pennsylvania teachers. You know, we, the MVP programming, we would like to move in that direction. We believe it is going to be more engaging and more rigorous for our students. I mentioned earlier, maintaining that enrollment at PVSD, all of the same benefits of being a traditional student, getting that diploma and flexibility, ease of, you know, this sometimes could be used as a transition for a student coming back from an alternative placement as a way to ease them back into our schools. And there is no need to withdraw and re-register because they're continued to be our own student. Very customizable to suit the needs of the student in terms of whether that's advanced courses or on grade level or even remedial. And there are options available where you can receive dual college credit as well as advanced placement options. So lots of selections available. So what we've been currently working on is really trying to take what our existing PVV is and really make it a competitive cyber program option for some of those families who maybe have left PV in the past to go with a cyber option for whatever reason and be competitive with them. We'd like to be able to offer it full-time or part-time as we are now. Again, some students, one course, two, three, or their full courses. We are focusing right now on summer credit recovery. We always have a summer credit recovery program that we've used in the past. So we're working on that. We also have some course advancement options for students who usually it's within the math and science areas that they are looking to advance, or maybe a high school student who for some reason can't fit a course in and wants to be able to take something over the summer. And again, we're working on transitioning that the majority of our students will be working through MVP as our course provider. So some of the next steps on the next slide that we have, we are really right now in the midst of program awareness. So we've met with our secondary counselors. I'd like to extend and make sure that our elementary counselors and all of our administrators are aware of the programming that is available, particularly that it's relatively new in the K to eight. And then get to a point where we're ready to market with our website and our brochure, which are, are really close to being ready to be released so that our community is aware that this is an option that we have. We're looking at our fall 2020 enrollment. We have our current PVV students who were there last year, who we will be bringing back obviously in the fall into that environment. And then again, Mr. Stansom Marsh and I would like to market our PVV to those families that are already attending a full-time cyber school as an opportunity for them to return to PV. Finalizing our summer pieces. And then one of the big pieces that we'd really like to do is develop our own cyber courses. As you heard me mention, we're working with a third-party provider because they've already curated and created that entire content. So there's a living, breathing Algebra One course existing in a learning management system. That is how our students connect with their learning and their teacher. We'd like to eventually create our own. So we are working with the intermediate unit to create professional development to help our teachers truly create their entire course online and have that prepared. So looking at a learning management system for that, what coursework we may need, and then again, supporting our teachers in doing that. How do we schedule that? And are there hybrids of that that we can schedule for, for our teachers? So lots, lots of things that we continue to work on. I threw this picture in there because even I myself started to get confused between what PVV is and what our virtual voyage is right now. And wanting to make sure that we are discerning between these two. So tried to put together somewhat of a Venn diagram. The middle shows you what they have in common. They're both virtual experiences with PA-certified teachers. They both are available, teachers via office hours, chats, email. They both maintain enrollment in PVSD, and they both are mainly asynchronous. Even PVV and these external cyber schools are mainly asynchronous in their delivery. Available to K to 12, and they have district-issued Chromebooks. On the left, you can see for our virtual voyage is what we're currently in. It's really that temporary solution that we quickly transitioned to and reacted to. All of our staff and students are there, and our virtual activities are being developed in real time, meaning our teachers are creating them just as they would plan their next lesson. They're doing it right now in the moment. Versus on the PVV side, you'll notice that that coursework is already created. They've spent that time to truly create the course in an online environment. And I think I pretty much went through most of the other things on the right, but I just wanted everyone to understand there really, there truly is a difference between what we're currently providing and what a true cyber program is. Moving into staffing, then, really just, you know, a reminder, we continue to look at our enrollments and follow our policy guidelines. On the next slide, we are also, every time we have a resignation or retirement, just as any other year, we continue to look at that and analyze if the position needs to be filled. We currently are operating under the preliminary budget for, based upon your meeting last week, with the attrition of one teaching position and continue to have our focus on supporting special education and support services. And all of our staff were communicated with on Friday. Their tentative assignments moving into next year. And so we're getting one, you know, certainly one step closer as we get to the end of this school year in finalizing all of our staffing. And then lastly, the summer learning resources that we have available. Just through this slide in here to remind you in our community that we do have a webpage for our virtual voyage that has some links to some resources available to staff. We really used it at the very beginning of our virtual voyage, those first two weeks where we were doing learning enhancements. But it is still there and has the links and supports for, for our families. We will be maintaining the exact path, the reading eggs and the math seeds. Those are district licenses that we have and software that you had approved in the past. Those will continue to be available to our families throughout the summer. We will probably have some period of time where they, they may not be available. We will communicate that based upon when we roll over our students into the next grade level and get things set up. But we hope to have them available at least through the end of July and then open back up. The ones at the bottom are just some additional resources that we've found to be beneficial for our students. They are free resources, and again, directions are on our website. Those are some things available to our families over the summer. And then, any questions on any of those three topics?
Hi, Mrs. Smith. It's Laura. I have a question for you with regards to PVV. Your explanation of how it's different from the virtual voyage was great. I think that diagram is really a good way to explain the differences. I understand that you're going to be, you know, pushing out brochures and publicity, you know, in the next couple of weeks, months, whatever, for the virtual program that we, you know, do already have and most likely will be expanding, obviously, going forward. But if families want to know right now more about that, what's the best way and how, who should they get in touch with? And what's the best way for them to gather information? And, and I understand, it's just, I understand that there's a lot of conversation and subtle bug kind of of what's going to happen in the fall and what that looks like. And if, even if we are open in brick and mortar, if they would like their children to actually, you know, have an alternative choice, I think, you know, the planning stages for that has all already begun. So I think it would be helpful for parents now, since we did talk about it during a board meeting, to really understand what the next steps to stay in PV, but, but take advantage of this programming would be.
Sure. Good question, Laura. I would suggest at this point in time, parents could reach out to myself or one of their school counselors. They certainly could do that, or even a building principal. I'm hopeful that we will have, our website is really ready to go. We just need to click a button and make it visible to everybody. And there is a form on that website that a parent could fill in that would let me know that they have an interest in the program so that I could reach out to them as well. So that, that would be my initial suggestions for if they have an interest and want more information. I actually have a call tomorrow with one family and another family that I spoke with last week.
Great, thank you.
This is Rena. I had a question actually about the same slide, so we can stay on this one. Again, I agree, this is such a helpful slide because so many people talk about our virtual voyage being homeschooling and cyber schooling, and it's really not the same. My question is, right now, most of our PV virtual, it sounds like, is at the high school level, and we have faculty and staff assigned to oversee that, which is listed as one of the, you know, components of PV virtual. So if we were to get an influx of elementary and middle school students, who would you imagine would oversee that and how would that work?
So currently, like I said, we do have staff that fulfill it as a duty. Our hope for next year, given some of our staffing and our reallocations, is that we will have one staff member from our high school staff that can oversee it. It will really depend upon numbers, Dr. Kohler, in terms of how many kids may be interested. If we have a handful of our elementary students or middle school, I could foresee that same teacher at the high school overseeing things. And when I say overseeing, I mean, they would get the progress reports on the students to say, you know, how well they are progressing. They would be able to reach out to parents or touch base with counselors on that. Our K to eight students don't have the same necessarily opportunity as our high school kids in that there's not a room in their buildings that they could physically still come to a building and, you know, have our teacher kind of behind them to answer any questions. The K to eight setting would really be at an at-home type opportunity for them right now, unless we get to a point where we have the numbers to justify a staff person a reallocation because maybe we don't need a teacher now in a different particular role. And we have lots of details to work out, you know, with our union as well to make sure that, you know, we, our preference is really to have our own teachers teaching the courses if we can get to that point. So definitely work to do yet and how we would staff it, and the numbers will tell us, Dr. Kohler, where, what we need to do.
Thank you.
I have one follow-up question with regards to PVV enrollment. So if, if one of the children enrolled, they are a current student right now, they'd like to move to PVV, and they have an IEP with in-school or in-class services via either one-on-one or specific supports. How would that family access those same resources in a home and virtual environment?
Sure. So I'm going to speak as if we're in a non-COVID environment. So if COVID wasn't in, in the picture here, we can service our students who have IEPs. We typically provide their IEP to the third-party vendor like MVP, mainly for the academic side of things. So they will review it and work with us on the accommodations and modifications to say if they can do them, or if they can't, or if we need to make revisions. And the special ed supervisors work, work with me on that and that conversation. We still provide the oversight and the compliance with the IEP, the yearly meetings. If the child needs related services, speech, OT, counseling, any of those types of things, the family would still be able to access those through PV. We'd have to individually determine, is that something that the child should come to our building for? And the parent maybe brings them once a week for that group session? Or is that something that could be accommodated in a virtual session? So I think we have some flexibility with that, but it would be, I believe, an individual case-by-case basis. I don't know if Dr. Boyd would like to add anything to that, though. You're on mute, Dr. Boyd.
Sorry, thank you. No, I would concur with what Mrs. Smith had shared. Definitely with the school closures due to COVID-19, we have learned more about our virtual platform and delivering of services to students. So those are certainly things that we can discuss when it comes to related services if we have students attending through PVV, and if they're not able to, or if there's something else, you know, getting in the way of coming to a brick and mortar building for those related services, we could certainly discuss a virtual environment for that as well.
Anything else? Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Moving on to section 4.03. If we could just get back to that on the agenda. Okay, the recommended action is a motion to approve 444 students eligible to graduate from Perkioman Valley High School on June 4th, 2020, as listed contingent upon their satisfactory completion of the graduate requirements. Given that this is a action item for today, I so move.
Second, Matthew Dorr.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Opposed. Motion carries. Congratulations to our graduating class of 2020.
Okay, item 4.04 is a discussion on the 2020-2021 Parents/Student Handbook for Elementary, Middle, and High Schools. And I believe we have some administrators here to help us discuss this issue.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Kohler. We have Dr. Kloon and we have Mr. Creedon, who are here to provide a little bit of background on the positive behavioral interventions and support system. It's a framework that's been implemented in six of our seven schools. We've talked about that before. However, it really feeds into the why of some of the proposed revisions to the discipline code at the middle level and to really move it forward and align it to some of the thinking around a more positively reinforced system, supporting students with good choices as opposed to necessarily assigning punitive consequences for poor choices. So Dr. Kloon and Mr. Creedon will provide some background and then help to explain very briefly some of the considerations that were made in developing the chart that you viewed in advance of the meeting tonight. And then they're open to questions as well. So I'm going to pull up just a couple of slides that will serve as speaking points for them and hopefully guide the conversation. So I'll turn it over to the two of you.
Hi, this is Ryan Creedon. Thank you, Dr. Russell. Good evening, everyone. This is, this has been a change to our current handbook, the code of conduct portion of our current handbook that has, I know has been a discussion for quite some time in policy committee and also amongst our middle school administrators. So we're, we're excited to see this change come to fruition. The first, the first change there is a revised chart of discipline levels and responses. We've, what we've done is we've reformatted our chart so that it doesn't necessarily, doesn't necessarily break out first infraction, second infraction, third infraction, and consequences that follow for every infraction. What it is, is it, it provides more of a summary. And in that summary, it also provides just ways that we can, also options, that we can deal with things restoratively as well, along with, you know, actions that need to be taken for certain behaviors as well. But what it does is that it provides more of the, the verbiage that allows us to deal with things more restoratively and in a restorative manner. So that's, it, it's a great way of, of allowing the PBIS language to be incorporated into what we're doing as far as our disciplinary practices are in the middle school levels. So that's, that's, that's a good change. Major-minor infraction definitions. We have been, I know East is a year ahead of West, but we have, West has also been working very hard on establishing definitions for all of our major and minor fractions within each building, East and West specifically. And what, what those definitions will do is follow the chart and support the chart in describing a lot of what those infractions are that are listed in the chart so that there is a full explanation for it. And it, it does provide a very general understanding of, of all of what's taking place and so that if there's any explanation that's needed, then it's, it's there. Infraction definitions listed in school board policy. We think it's also very important to make sure that we're linking school board policy to the infractions that are shown in the chart and in our major-minor definitions as well. That, that provides that much more clarity and explanation to all that is taking place. So that, that is critical. And the one other thing I'm going to do is kind of skip one and then go to the revised summary of consequence language. What we did there was kind of just, in a way, edit it to make it, have it make a little bit more sense, align it with a lot of what is taking place now as far as consequences that are occurring within the buildings, and also make sure that we, we added more language that is part of the state code and state policy to make sure it was aligned with that. So with that said, I'm going to hand it on over to Seamus to explain the rest.
Good evening, everybody. It's Seamus Kloon from East. Just back to the handbook. As Mr. Creedon mentioned, East by design is about a year ahead of West. Both schools are going to link their handbooks. They're based upon the same common goals and expectations. There are differences between East and West. For example, East has a behavioral statement, which is East Rocks. West has a behavioral statement, which is West Strong, which is expected. Each school kind of builds a program around itself. We do keep track of major and minors, which is a really important data point for us. And we're actually implementing that or inputting that data in the SWISS system. And as we talk about rolling out Synergy, our new SIS system, it'll also be linked up to that and helping us keep track of that data, which I think will, will be very valuable as we connect to Safe2Say and, and looking at that data. Along with that, when you take, for example, in East, and we've, we've kind of shared particular pages from our handbooks, for the faculty handbooks that we'd like attached, there's expectations for the entire school, but you'll also notice there are specific expectations for each and every part or key part of the building that were identified by the faculty and staff, and then really thought through and approved as to what our expectations are. And again, the focus on positive, the focus is on students doing the right thing, what that looks like, as opposed to doing the wrong thing, and here's the consequence. The idea is to really educate the students about what the expected behavior is. And in so doing that, the teachers and students, we have a leadership group of students. They have developed videos that the teachers share and educate the students about how to behave in each area. We don't assume that any student knows how to behave in a particular area. The teachers always take the naughty or bad side of it. Like, they show the kids how it's not supposed to be done. Students always do the appropriate side by design, and they basically demonstrate how that works. And we've listed the videos, I think, on the one handbook that we're doing. And then finally, there's a problem behavior flowchart. And what's really helpful with that is it actually, once, you know, as, as Mr. Creedon pointed out, we divide up the majors and minors, we actually have a process, like a thinking process that teachers follow. Is it a major and minor? What are some expected ways am I to respond? And then what are some options? So in the past, where it was, look, if this consequence or this behavior falls into this category, and it's going to then, you know, first time or second time fall over into this particular consequence, instead, it's much more dynamic where we're asking questions and prompting the teacher to ask questions, and then looking at what are some possible responses, always with the goal to try to get the student to follow the, the expected behavior and, and to recognize that, hey, you're not doing what we've talked about, such as the expected behaviors in East Rocks or West Strong. Let me reframe that and remind you of that, and then go back again. So, so it's really a, a very thoughtful kind of process. And by having the flowchart, we're hoping that provides some consistency in what you're going to see in terms of how teachers respond as well and how we address that, and then, and then collect data, obviously, on the backside. I don't know if you want to go to the next slide, Dr. Russell, or if you want us to just answer questions.
Yeah, I think, I mean, what, what's provided here is just a little bit of background and a link to PDE's website about PBIS, and then also just calling out some of those components that you and Mr. Creedon were going to speak to. So really, what, what I would do now is open it up. This is intended to be a discussion, and if there are questions about some of what's being proposed, we would be happy to address them.
This is Mrs. Lofton, and I'm glad that we finally have an opportunity to actually discuss the proposed revision. I know that we had talked about revising this, but it wasn't really prepared for us to talk about in policy committee last time that we met. So I appreciate it being shared fully with the board. I think it's really an important decision to revamp our discipline code. And, you know, I feel a lot in here that I sort of think weren't some additional discussion. And I'm, so if you could maybe go to page 48 of the handbook, of the middle school handbook. So, for example, here, I'm just looking at the examples of things that are considered our Level 3 offenses and that result in out-of-school suspension. And one of those items is gambling. And I've just, I'm not sure that we're necessarily aligning. I think that needs to be defined because I think every single football game that I've been to, I've bought a 50-50 raffle ticket. And so, I mean, you know, are raffles gambling? Are, there, there's so many different things that I, I think aren't really clearly defined. And then when you flip over to our high school handbook, the consequence for gambling is... And then when you flip over to our high school handbook, the consequence for gambling is, it's more along the lines of, let's see, of one off of detention. So I'm not sure why in middle school you would be, you could be suspended for five to 10 days for something that in the high school you get attention for, a suspension. So it's so yeah, so it's on page 70 of, or 71 of the high school handbook. We'll see that. So I, I have to say, you know, I feel like, I know that we've really been talking and really encouraging administration to come up with a revision of our, our discipline code that reflects PBIS. But in some ways, I feel like this has become so vague that, or I, I feel like there needs to be more discussion and looking at how consequences grow and evolve from elementary to middle to high. Like just, just looking at that one particular thing raises questions for me. Why it's a five to 10 day suspension at the middle level. But it would just start at a one detention at the high school level. The other question that I have, so in the high school handbook, if you go back up to page 61, and we have a summary of drug and alcohol administrative guidelines and how different levels and scenarios of drug and alcohol use are addressed. And I don't see anything similar to that in our middle school handbook. I just, I'm seeing here that, again, that's considered a level, what is it? Actually, it's really not, I'm not really seeing it addressed specifically at all. We just have, you know, example being possession of drug related paraphernalia. So I don't know if we need to copy, if those are the administrative guidelines for how, if he, if he keeps scrolling up. You're on page 62. Oh wait, no, are you in the high school handbook?
Yeah.
I am seeing a, maybe, maybe scroll down a little bit. I just clicked, there it is. So we have this very detailed description of exactly what type of situation would result in, you know, these are administrative regs for how this is handled at the high school level. You know, I am aware that sometimes this comes up at the middle school level. You know, I don't know. I would think that we would want to carry this through to the middle level. And, but, you know, I'm not really seeing it reflected in what's being shared here. So, you know, other than if you go back on the, the middle school, page 48, yeah, so it's considered a level four infraction with, you know, out of school suspensions for five to 10 days due process here, you know, very severe consequences. And so I feel like this is a, a good first start. I feel like there's a lot more. You know, and I'm, I'm just picking a couple initial things about use or possession of drugs and alcohol and just some of these other, you know, things of how we think some of these most serious infractions should be addressed. And I'm just, I'm not seeing consistency from middle school to high school. And I recognize that the part that's around PBIS, but it actually seems that what we're doing, what we're communicating in our high school handbook is a scenario that's more to our students who may be experiencing challenges related to drugs and alcohol. So I just, I feel like there's more work to be done here. Is I guess, you know, my question or my, my statement about this revision.
I think if, if, I mean, just to pause here, Mrs. Lofton, I think if, if I heard you correctly and understood correctly, what you're hoping we go back and consider would be clear explanations, alignment among the different handbooks as well as an evolution from elementary to middle to high school.
Yes, exactly. You know, I, I think maybe in some ways, I know we had talked about, you know, wanting to work in more restorative practices, more positive supports, more strategies to help students experience discipline at a learning process as opposed to a punitive process. And I'm not sure that this fully reflects that.
Are there other comments or questions? Administration will go back and consider that feedback. That's very helpful.
I have a quick comment, Dr. Russell. This is Maggie McGovern, the student rep. So there was actually a student handbook review committee that was set up by Dr. Moss at the high school that any students were allowed to be a part of. And piggybacking off of what Mrs. Lofton said, it was a lot of the similar things. Not only were there things that they actively wanted changed, but there were discrepancies and things that might need to be updated. For example, on page 12 of the high school handbook, handbook for the high school, it says, we still use hack. And I know that's about to change next year. And these are usually small things, but some students had a problem with the dress code. Our Chromebook in, on page 10, it says the care of books and school property doesn't really include a lot of information about our Chromebooks and our Chromebook chargers. And as that becomes a part of, a part of our daily school activities, we wanted to maybe update that as well. I just think that having those committees at the high school and the, the middle schools even would really help to make sure that these are in alignment with board policies and make sure that they're updated to what the students actually need them to be. So if, I guess my question would be, if there was found to be more discrepancies among like a student handbook review committee, is there any chance and any open availability to bringing that to the board again to revise, even if it's in the complete middle of the school year or something like that?
Well, actually, that did occur this past year. So, so yes, I would say the answer to that, the short answer is yes. It's, it's not typical that there are revisions or addendums during the course of the school year. However, through the work of the policy committee that really tried to connect policy, policy revisions to the student handbook, there were some addendums that were made and approved by the board earlier this year. That is a real possibility. We try to have everything in order so that as students begin the school year, they're well aware of the expectations and we don't change them on our students. But yeah, that's a real possibility.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Sure.
This is Sarah Evans-Brockett. And follow up to that was, were any of these changes, suggestions from this group that Ms. McGovern is talking about? I love the idea that the students were involved in that. And I'm hoping that we took some of their ideas as we move forward.
Yeah, I loved, I appreciated hearing that too, Mrs. Evans-Brockett. I would have to talk to Dr. Moss about this year's handbook. And I don't know, Maggie, if you were referring to an activity this year where you engaged in conversation. But I really appreciate that it's been opened up to students to have a voice in some of what's being considered. Do you know, did that happen this year, Maggie?
I think it was last year or very early this year, but yes, Dr. Moss sent out a Google form to all students and said anyone who wanted to participate was welcome to. And it was during a free period of the day, I think, that we all came down and started going through and discussing it. And I'm sure we meant to have more and got distracted with the regular activities of the school year. But I think that continuing that committee and having a chance to speak at policy committees or through Dr. Moss would be a really great idea.
I'll see if I can find out some more about that, Mrs. Evans-Brockett, and what the potential is for any input at this point, since this is a discussion this evening. And I don't foresee these handbooks being ready to bring to you for approval or action this month. And there may be possibilities for students to become involved between now and July.
That would be absolutely awesome. Thank you so much.
Other questions or comments on the handbooks, clarifications that would be helpful, considerations?
Hi, this is Mr. Creedon again. I just wanted to just kind of let everyone know that the, the changes that we're speaking of now are basically a result of a lot of the work that has gone into preparing both schools for PBIS. And I think the, the way we, in, in the way it, we want to communicate it, the way we want to kind of allow it to be something that is not a, you know, a gotcha or doesn't even allow, you know, it, it, what is, what it, what it's going to do in the flow chart that Dr. Clune was kind of describing is it's going to bring all of the teachers together and get them all on the same page so that there's more consistency across entire building. So we're excited about this and excited for them to see that it is something we're becoming more unified in. Instead of, you know, many teachers maybe having different thoughts or mindsets when it comes to constant discipline and consequences across the board. This is something that will provide that common language. So that's something I'm, I'm excited about. And Mrs. Lofton, you brought up some good points. I think something we can make sure we do is, is if we want to dig deeper into this chart and refine some things and see, make sure that we are either better defining things or better organizing things in, within this chart. I think that's very important to do. But, you know, it, as, and, and you can kind of see how when you go from a level one to a level two and so on, you're going to see at the top of, say, that level two column under disciplinary options, you're going to see any appropriate response from level one. You're going to see at the top of examples under level two, you're going to see continuation of level one misbehavior. So a lot of behaviors that we see in middle school, they're continuation of behaviors sometimes. They're not necessarily going to go, you know, we do deal with incidents that, you know, can go from one to 100 very quickly. But a lot of the incidents that we deal with are moving their way up in that, in those types of categories at times. So hopefully we're able to get to them soon enough. So they're not able to do that. That's the whole, that's the whole goal. But you do end up seeing that within. So it, it is, you know, in a way, it is a progression. The levels can be, or the examples can be progressions as well in severity. You know, when you, when you talk about a topic like disrespect, there can be a, a level of severity of disrespect that can go throughout levels. And, you know, it, that, the same thing could be said for gambling as well. So, you know, you, you go, you, you have those different levels of things, but making sure we're continuing to find those more clearly is, is definitely something that's a great suggestion.
Well, yeah, I think that's part of why this is such a difficult topic because there are so, you know, I think that's what, where the evolution of the grid came from, you know, and I'm referring to what was the grid as the previous discipline code was that, you know, it was a first offense, a second offense, a third offense. It really was very progressive in nature. I, I think that there was a lot of work that needed to be done with that too, to try to ensure that some of the more minor infractions were dealt with in manners that were appropriate. And again, more educational in the approach. You know, in, in some ways I am concerned that, you know, some of the, you know, fighting, for example, is a level three offense. Well, you know, any, you know, fighting could be, that could be even just a wide range of things. So, you know, is it, is it something that needs a parent contact? Is it, you know, 10 days? It, I feel like, I, I just, I feel like this is a good start to the conversation. I feel like there's more that needs to be done to also just ensure fairness across how students are treated across schools, across, you know, within, within the high school from, you know, there's three different house principles, you know, just ensuring that, you know, all factors are being considered, but there is a level of consistency and fairness and so that people know, for example, if I get caught vaping, what's going to happen to me. You know, it's not, well, maybe someone will say, oh, you know, you really shouldn't do that, or, or you could get suspended, like it's, I feel like there just needs to be a little bit more structure and consistency so that people do feel that they're being treated fairly. The other thing that I'm, you know, I was just looking to see how vaping is addressed. And it seems like the entire section on nicotine use and vaping was deleted. Vaping has been mentioned in the new grid. So like if you scroll down to what pages? Why is this telling me? So it's page, after page 40 of the handbook, and there's a summary of consequences, which the page numbering starts again at one. So if you go down to the next page, yeah. So if you scroll down through that, you know, there's this, a lot of, so going, yeah, all of this information about what's supposed to happen if you're, let's see, okay, hold on. Keep going. Here we go. Okay. So it's paged through this. Their drug and alcohol policy, what everything means, you know, so what does it mean to be distributing? What does it mean to be in possession? How are we defining school property? Then page five, we start talking about exactly what we mean by nicotine. I, I think it's important that this is clearly communicated at the middle level, that it's in the handbook, that it's not. I, I think it needs to be clearly communicated to students what the rules are and what the administrative guidelines are around use of products containing nicotine. So I'm not sure why this whole section was deleted.
Right. This is Seamus Clune. I, I really appreciate the, the suggestions. I think we can certainly work to more closely align. I would, I would just follow up with Ryan's comments to, to also say too, you kind of have to look at all of the pieces that we shared together where we, we, we pulled out a lot of items from our handbook in the past because we were continuing to add on to something. And I think it was going in a direction that didn't really align well with PBIS. And we're trying to be more thoughtful in terms of what we're, what we're, what we're listing and be, trying to be consistent in terms of teacher response and also, you know, consistency of, of response without, without locking us into what was the grid before where, you know, everything is, is very strictly defined. And again, in the, in the handbook, the way that it's set up, the teacher is trying to redirect behaviors, teachers trying the teacher is trying to redirect behaviors, teacher is trying to, is trying to determine, is this a major or minor? And if it's a major, then how do we address that? I do think that we could certainly go back over and confirm that everything is listed and appropriate. We can certainly spell out more details with the alcohol and drug policy. Some situations thankfully don't show up as often at the middle level, which is appreciated. I certainly think we can certainly characterize or try to come up with as many details as would help students and parents understand what the expected outcome. We always go with the focus, of course, like the high school, you know, worried about student safety first. And then addressing, you know, what are the ultimate consequences for, for that type of poor choice?
Dr. Kloon, this is Laura. So do I understand what you're saying by way of of the vagueness? Is the vagueness intentional in your reworking of the handbook? Is that what you're trying to say?
What I'm trying to say is not, not that we're, not that we're being vague, but that, that we're, we're trying to avoid being so so specific in terms of this has happened. So if we define an action as A, then absolutely consequence must be B. Instead, we're trying to be with a PBIS approach, try to open up a range of possible options, given the circumstances that are occurring. Depending on the severity, which is why it's important for us to identify ahead of time, is it a major or minor? Helps drive some of those consequences as well. I, I do appreciate the thinking behind our, some things that we have listed that have carried over from the handbook, should they still be listed as a major and should we be more specific in defining what it is? And those are, those are absolutely really good points for us to take back and revise. The only other thing I would share too is Mr. Creedon and I and the administrators at the middle level work with consultants from the county regarding PBIS. We actually communicate with other principals who are implementing PBIS at the middle level. And I do feel that what we're presenting with you is best practice for what's expected in a, in a student handbook. Obviously, meeting the needs that we kind of felt were, were needed here at PV, but, but we have shared and talked about with other and other administrators have shared what they've also thought about in terms of their handbook.
So, so I understand in theory that makes complete sense to me. Especially since, you know, you kind of have been living and breathing PBIS, whereas it's not at the high school. And, and so, you know, everybody's framework and experience is different. I don't personally know any other discipline climate other than that, since I only, you know, I have a fourth grader. So I understand what you're trying to achieve by way of implementing and overlaying that philosophy to, and I appreciate the continuity between the two buildings. I think that that is going to go very far by way of culture, once all of the kids are together again at the high school. I think that in reality though, although, you know, theoretically that makes perfect sense. I think in reality, there's some concern that if the infraction and the consequence is up for debate, so to speak, based on an individual's specific scenario, that there can be also subjective, subjectivity by way of who imposes the punishment on who. Meaning that not all students would ultimately be treated fairly if there's like a gradation or a coloring of different scenarios, you know, based on maybe past infractions or the overall dynamic of the child. You know, all different things that come into play subconsciously when we discipline, you know, even in our own houses. I think that without it being more concrete in a, in a handbook scenario, there's, there's a risk, you know, we run the risk of that.
Right. And I appreciate that, that, those thoughts. I would put it in concert with, there's a flowchart kind of dictating teacher and administrative response and kind of steps and questions in every situation that we need to ask and positive behavioral approaches that have to be put in. And I, and I think we can certainly take the, the flowchart that Ryan shared and, and certainly be more specific in terms of what the potential consequences are and, and look at, does this flow from elementary, middle to high school? And look at some of the ones that, that seem, you know, obviously that we need to maybe look back over again. The, the original flowchart that was there is what I'm referencing, what I'm saying, and we've obviously deleted it out, is where we're trying to make a shift because of the very different philosophy with PBIS. And I, I appreciate the concern, which is, hey, is it possible that we could in some way be inconsistent in dealing with students? And I, and I can only share with you from my perspective and what we're talking about with PBIS. I think it's actually the opposite. It really is focused on trying as many opportunities as many times as possible to put students in the best light while still holding them accountable for, you know, for, you know, choices that they make, always with the focus on, you know, we all have, these are all great kids. Every student, one of our students is a great kid. Sometimes they make bad choices. How do we fairly address that? And obviously certain situations, when you look at things that are listed as a level three, level four, obviously are a lot more, are a lot more intense, that they, they have bigger consequences, which, which would be expected.
And if I could just add real quick, without taking up more of your time, I just wanted to mention, although we see a lot of information in the document that you're looking at now crossed out, it is, it is still in the new part of the handbook. It is as more of the major minor definition portion. So, Dr. Russell, I don't know if you could open up a major minor definitions, possibly maybe West's major minor definitions, so that you can just get a little bit of a look into the fact that we, we have included language when it comes, definitions when it comes to tobacco, alcohol, things of that sort. So it's all in there. And what we also tried to do a lot of is, is integrate that board policy as well, so.
So I'm sorry, you're saying that there's another document that does include all this information? And I just, why isn't that included in the handbook?
So the major minor definitions, there would, there are links to the major minor definitions below the chart. So the chart would basically give you a general understanding of the levels and the examples and possible actions. And then below the chart, there are going to be links that if you click on those links, then you're going to, you're going to get to this document, or it will show you definitions for all of those examples in the chart. And it will also link board policy to his major minor definitions as well. So it'll be, it'll, it'll have that explained.
Okay. So I think that's also something we need to be able to actually closely read. And personally, I think it would be helpful to actually include that in the handbook. I'm not sure of the value of having it be linked out like that.
And, and we can, we can certainly list it all out. The reason why we included those links is because, you know, just for simplicity's sake, but also, you know, to make sure that there is, if there is a distinction, then I know East has major minor definitions and West has many major minor definitions. As I explained in policy committee, that does not mean that the definitions are different. They just, East might have a little bit more of a focus on, say, you know, if we're talking about disruption in the classroom, East might have a bigger problem with calling out in class and West might have a bigger problem with leaving class. So West might clarify leaving class in their definition where East might clarify callouts in their definition. So there's tweaks that each school might make, but the definitions are, are similar in both. And that was also a purposeful as part of the training that each school did with the IU in creating these for each school.
So I'm really not comfortable having separately defined. You know, I understand that the application of this is going to need to be customized to the individual needs of buildings, but I feel like our handbook should be the same for East and West. And, you know, I said, you know, Mr. Sewers, I'm wondering if you can weigh in on this because some of these issues could result in serious student discipline of, you know, suspensions, out of school suspensions and school suspensions. And I'm just, I'm curious what are, if we have a handbook that suggests that the consequence from a behavior could range from counseling to an out of school suspension for 10 days, how does that impact us if a student or a student's family questions the consequence that they've received?
Well, I think your basic legal responsibility is to put the students on notice of what the infractions are and what the possible consequences are. I don't think that, I don't think that it's necessarily invalid to provide a range of consequential, you know, a range of consequences. And it's, and it's not invalid to consider, you know, earlier there was discussion regarding taking into consideration matters such as prior student discipline or disciplinary record. And that's not, that is typical in determining a consequence for a particular infraction. So our basic obligation is to make sure that the students are on notice of what is required of them and the potential consequences for a disciplinary infraction. I mean, and then within that context, you have very, very broad discretion as a board. And, and then you would, you know, I mean, and obviously the initial responsibilities of boards, but delegating that to the various building administrations, there's, there's, you know, I think by necessity, by necessity and design, significant discretion granted to you. And again, you know, there's, it's old case law, but I mean, it's still good law and the courts, although they're getting, you know, some of the decisions they get, they've demonstrated a willingness to interfere to a greater degree. There's still a basic concept that a court is not, not a super school board, that these matters are left to the discretion of school boards and that the court should defer to your determinations in regard to these matters. So I don't know if that answers your question.
No, that is actually very helpful because I just wanted to make sure that we're not potentially putting ourselves in a difficult position in the application of the discipline code.
You certainly don't want to be imposing a discipline that's not called out in your code. That would, I think, be subject to a challenge. But I mean, having, again, having the flexibility, having a range of consequences is not in and of itself valid.
Thank you.
Mr. Sewers, this is Kim Mares. I actually have a question along that line and maybe I'm, just to clarify. So taking this example of East and West, possibly having, or not possibly, they say they have a little bit of a different emphasis, would that be an issue?
I've never seen that addressed. I mean, you certainly wouldn't want there to be a very, you know, there's nuances. If they're talking nuance, that's one thing. And if they're talking about emphasis, like from what I heard earlier, I mean, there's, you know, maybe based on whatever factors or just the fact that it exists, there are different issues in those two buildings. And it's, it wouldn't be inappropriate to focus more on the particular problems facing that building. But I would expect that there wouldn't be a significant discrepancy between the consequences for similar conduct between the two buildings. From what I heard, it was more a matter of focus and not of what they were focusing on, particularly in light of this PBIS, you know, concept. Then, you know, if you do something in West, you're going to get a lesser consequence than if you do it in East. That could be problem, you know, could be problematic, but I don't think that that's the intent. I think it's more of a focusing on identified issues in each particular building. And that would be appropriate if you're, if, you know, for a PBIS approach.
So other questions or thoughts before we take this feedback and consider some revisions to bring back? Well, Dr. Kloon and Mr. Creedon, I appreciate you participating in the conversation. Thank you for the, the background and the explanation. We'll get together, we'll convene and we'll talk through some of the feedback provided tonight and we'll prepare something new for the board to review. Does that sound good, Mrs. Lofton, what you're looking for?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful to just, I like that we stepped away from the structure. I just, I feel like a little more structured than what we have.
I'm picking it up. Something in between, maybe.
It's, it's some, somehow it's, yeah, I feel like this is, you know, I know we've had so many conversations around how, again, how do we make discipline a learning experience that we are educating our students? We're not. But also just ensuring that we have structure and ensuring that we're doing this in a way that really promotes fairness and equity for our students. And is clear to students.
Yeah, I'm picking up that you, it seems as if there may be, this is nebulous to some, and we need to clarify and articulate very clearly. We want to be consistent. And then we also want to hold students accountable. I don't want anybody to get the impression that PBIS is intending for students to avoid accountability connected to their choices. That's not the case. But it is an effort to work with students a little bit differently, or exactly what you said, Mrs. Lofton, to modify their behaviors, to turn them into learning experiences. They're held accountable and hopefully the next time around, they make a better choice. I mean, that's the idea, but we'll work, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, exactly. Because we've heard time and again that students, when we've had discussions around certain issues, that suspensions don't actually do anything and it doesn't really address the root of the problem. And so I would love for our approaches to get more at the root of the problem. But that doesn't mean that we want to eliminate accountability. I think accountability and holding students accountable, particularly for some of the more severe infractions is really essential for ensuring a safe environment for students.
Agreed. I agree. So, so we'll take this back and we'll in turn bring something back to you. Okay? But again, I appreciate Dr. Kloon and Mr. Creedon, and I appreciate the questions and the feedback tonight. It was extremely helpful. So thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to share and discuss about, about PBIS and our handbook. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to share and discuss about, about PBIS and our, our handbook. Thank you.
Thanks for being here this evening.
Okay. Thank you both for that discussion. Moving on to item 4.5, the enrollment report where we presented on June 8th. I did see two things pop up in the Q and A, so I was just gonna quickly read those comments. They're both from a Skibek Township resident, Audrey N., I'm not gonna butcher the last name. But her first comment was, does PV Virtual allow IEPs? And can you go to North Monco Tech School and this at the same time? And then her second comment was, who can we reach out to to get more info about PV Virtual? And I believe Mrs. Smith addressed those items, but we can discuss at the end of the meeting if necessary. So that concludes my section.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kohler. That brings us on to section five on business with Mr. Dorr.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. Section 5.01, comments from the audience who are accepting on business. Danny, unless some were sent. Can we clarify that?
So I actually lost my internet connection a moment earlier and now as I've come back into the Zoom meetings, the little button on the Q and A is no longer there. So I cannot assist you.
I don't, I don't see any, except for the ones that.
It looks like.
So moving up, moving on to section 5.02, a finance update with Mr. Weaver. Mr. Weaver?
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to explain some business items. Of course, last week we had proposed preliminary budget approved on Thursday night. So we have a couple of housekeeping type of items to bring the board up to, up to speed on some of these things. We have quick legislative updates. We'll talk a little bit about the tax and revenue anticipation note. We'll hit upon some capital projects. And we do have a couple of other things that have blossomed since we've created this agenda, so we'll get into that. First item for legislative update, the CARES Act monies. We talked about those. Those are not reflected yet in our budget figures at this point in time. The total allocation according to PDE is $227,000. You do know that there is some sort of discussion going on with how much of those monies go to private parochial schools. That conversation continues. And so there will be a reduction of that 227. So what we've decided to do, as we explained last week, is to still hold. There is no update at this point in time on those dollars and what those total impacts may be moving forward for the CARES Act. Again, here's a little bit of the background, the federal guidance from Betsy DeVos, the Federal Department of Education. That is running different than what some, some states have understood. The equity issue associated with that. That conversation continues and we'll just take our time over these next couple of weeks, verify what those numbers may be. Either the income stream at 227 minus what we are being told is a bit, is about $1,900. Or if that $1,900 per, the estimate from the state will change. So we'll continue to guide that, look at that information. Moving on to a second group of monies associated with the state's budget that was passed, of course, the K through 12 budget that Governor Wolf signed over the weekend or right at the start of the weekend, I should say, has a 12-month stream associated with school districts. What you see is a cut piece from the Democratic House Appropriations Committee, which shared their information with PASBO and PSBA. You can see a couple of things. First of all, you can see where we're currently at with our basic education funding and what the state-approved budget will bring in. You can see the little difference there of $221,000, for instance, for basic education funding, which locks us in at 1920. You may recall that we were sitting at 1819 audited figures. So it's a little bit of an adjustment there. Special education, you can see where we actually had a little bit more than what we had in there for 1819. So that's actually a deduct, the net there is $212,000 that we will, we will be showing definitely moving forward into our final budget process. The right-hand column is the column that we're interested in at this point in time. This is additional monies as part of the state budget that was approved. That is specifically called COVID-19 Disaster Emergency School Health and Safety Grants. And this is over and above the original impact of the heroes. Or I'm sorry, the CARES Act money. So we're trying to figure out and gauge where that comes from. We have been reassured by Hannah Barrett from PASBO that this is over and above, and indeed the law does agree with that. So the, this is yet an additional whole stream of monies associated with school districts that can apply for these monies. And this, this specific $490,000 is specific to Perkyomen Valley School District. There is a listing of items that we must apply for in this grant process. It only applies to basically anything associated with COVID-impacted items. And one of those big items includes technology and mental health services. So we are continuing to look at those figures. What the pros and cons are of utilizing and applying for those dollars. We don't know if there, you know, how the application is going to be set up, what that's going to look like. But we are quickly moving forward with those numbers and the board needs to know about that. We have not obviously showed any of those dollars either in our budget at this point in time. The third item I'd like to talk to everybody about in the legislative update is the Homestead-Farmstead certifications. And thankfully, we don't have to worry about this. The legislators, if you recall this, there was a big to-do a couple of weeks ago. We were notified that the Homestead-Farmstead monies, property tax relief, that was going to be cut in half. However, they worked it out, the state legislature helped and came like a knight in, in shining armor to make up the difference. So the bottom line is, is this is no longer an issue. We will be held harmless and whole at what was the state certified as of May 1st. So there is no reduction, which is a good thing overall. So Dr. Russell, if you would move forward, there's a little bit of that information on there. And again, the important thing is it's not an issue for us at this point in time. Maybe in the future, we need to watch that, future years, but for this year, not an issue. The last item to address is House Bill 2460. And it is not yet, it passed the House. It has not been passed by the Senate. And so it's not been provided to the governor. But we have been working with our tax collectors. We had a conversation with our tax collectors in regards to this. And we've brought Mr. Subers into the conversation. And we do anticipate that we will move back, whether this bill passes or not, in order to help our taxpayers. We will lengthen and increase our discount period from an August 31st to a September 30th date. And we will also look at possibly eliminating the charging of any penalty amount prior to December 31st or December 15th. We do know that in talking with Mr. Subers, we might be able to adjust that date a little bit. We don't know. And of course, if they mandated, if this bill passes, which I don't know what the possibilities are, it will automatically set that date up for us. So we continue to look at these as options and really push for, Dr. Russell, if you would go to the next slide. That these dates will be moved. Certainly we're moving back the discount to September 30th. We are also definitely knowing that for this particular year, we're going from three installments to four installments. Now, we do have freedom with these dates, so it's less of a concern from a legal perspective. But we would, we are recommending that we go from three installments to four installments, date those four installments, 915, 1015, 1115, and 1215, based upon the conversation that we had with our tax collectors. And they would be all for the installments in those dates. Again, the last piece that we've got to get into consideration is that penalty piece and that final penalty date. We do anticipate in working with Mr. Subers that we will have resolutions that the board can approve, review and approve next Monday to move forward with that. The idea of a property tax freeze at this point in time is probably not likely. Again, it was a shot across the bow. We think from the legislative perspective and all of our professional organizations are saying, just pay attention to that in future years, but not so much for this year. And the Act 13 is going to run out at the end of this school year as defined in the act. So we're looking at how will that impact how we do business moving forward? So any questions on legislative items at this point in time? Okay, if not, we'll move forward to the tax and revenue anticipation note. Just be aware that Mrs. Hurd and I are continuing to monitor our cash flow and we're continuing to work with the banks in a possible tran, tax and revenue anticipation note transaction that we might need in the future to help us a stopgap measure once we go into the new fiscal year as a possibility. We're hopeful that we don't have to do that. But again, we're making sure that we're insulated in case we need to do that. The board is well aware of why an item like that comes up and we'll continue to keep everybody abreast as we move forward. Capital projects. We continue to streamline and look at capital projects for this summer. We know that we were, we have a capital project plan for carpet replacement at Schwenksville Elementary School. Part of our discussion in prior weeks was to get an upper floor estimate. That estimate was received late this afternoon. That estimate is about $75,500 for the top portion, the first level of Schwenksville. That removes all carpeting except for the main office and the library. So like I said, we just got this, this afternoon and that will be part of our thinking moving forward. We have inquired, but we do not yet have solid estimates, updated estimates from Franklin Flooring for similar removal of carpet at Evergreen and Skipback. Of course, those are the two, other two elementary schools that we're monitoring. A new item that has been a long time on the list, but is relatively new to us are freezer compressors. We, a couple of weeks ago, we had the freezer compressor go in the district office freezer. In case you don't know, we do have a freezer there in the, in the district office. It's old and the compressor did go on that. So we're looking at, we did some spotty repairs on that. We know we have to replace that. So they're about $15,000 to $16,000 apiece. And these freezer compressors would go on to the existing freezers at District Office, Evergreen and Skipback. And then they would extend the life period of those items. Evergreen and Skipback is original to when they built them, so those compressors are approaching 30 years old. And the district office one, we can't find records for. So we're pretty sure that when the district purchased the building, I think in 86 or 87, they may have installed it. And it may very well be that old. So that is a new item. Additional items that we looked at and we had talked about in the past, mid aisle rails in the bleachers for the stadium, Keenan Stadium, home and away, and they're listed respectively there. And again, stadium, Keenan Stadium Field and Track, $1.7 million is still listed as well. It is the installation of the turf, resurfacing of the track and some other projects associated with that. And that, that number has been fairly consistent since we've received, for Keenan Stadium, since we've received the RFPs in late April. So quick update. As we talked about, we did have preliminary budget approval at 1.5% with reserves of 1.5 million in unassigned fund balance and 821,000 in the, the expected COVID reserves. We received additional information on our MCIU cost plan, our special education services in and out of the office and through much time and effort in working with unison with Mrs. Hurd and the business office. We now know what our total cost plan is for 2020, 2021. And unfortunately, it will lead to an increase in the expenditures that we presented last Thursday. So we're looking at finalizing a number, but it looks like it will be about $197,431. And that is on for a board review and approval for today, tonight and for next week. The basic largest increase is in the transitional services. So we continue to look at that. Additionally, we mentioned the two other items, the positive that the CARES Act monies net about $212,000. That will be in addition to the revenues. And the COVID monies from the state that we talked about associated with the passage of the state budget, in addition to the original CARES money of $490,000. Again, we need to apply for those monies, but that is our allotment and we need to back up the reasons for why we are requesting those dollars, but they are set aside for Perkyomen Valley to that dollar figure of $490,000. So we've got to be very careful when we apply for these different COVID-generated savings and grant opportunities that we're A, not double dipping, B, that we know what we want for each particular one because they are slightly different. So we've got to monitor and adjust what we're asking for. We are gathering a group of administrators on what it is that we can ask for and what we should be asking for to access those dollars. And we'll keep the board abreast on those as well. And the last item for tonight is another good item. Mr. Ganesh is, is recommending and moving forward with the purchase of 330 staff laptops. They are Dell Latitudes 5300s, two-in-one devices. The good thing is, is that this is, that we can fit this into a three-year lease because it's a 0% interest rate through Dell, which is great and that's fantastic. And Mr. Ganesh and Mrs. Hurd have confirmed, they've worked together to confirm that those budgetary dollars in the lease dollars that are coming off and the lease dollars that would be coming on with the approval of this would fit in existing lease dollars in our budget. And just as a note, these would be replacing laptops that are almost five years old at this point in time. So it is a necessary evil from a budgetary perspective and to advance our staff moving forward. That is all I have for finance update. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Moving on to section 5.03, the report on grants and donations. We have four coming in. The COVID-19 Relief Fund for $1,344. Autism Awareness, $750. Is that accurate, $2 symbols? Or was that, was it more than 750, Dr. Russell?
You know, Mr. Dorr, I have to check with Ms. Widener. We'll, we'll follow up with you on that. Could be a typo, but I'll double check to make sure.
It was 750. It's, it's, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Garden project for $501 and last is sensory room for $6,000. Moving on to 5.04, there will be a motion to approve a grant from PV Education Foundation in the amount of $501 to create and maintain a garden on the property of the Perkyomen Valley High School. Any questions? Can we move that to consent then, please? 5.05, there will be a motion to approve annual agreement with Alma Base in the amount of $5,000 for the purpose of maintaining the PVSD Alumni Network Portal, which enables the district to maintain and grow an alumni database and promotes connections between graduates and the school district community. Any questions?
This is Judy Lofton. I'm just really curious whether we think we're getting much return for our investments on this portal. Are you seeing, I'm wondering if you could describe the level of student or, I'm sorry, of alumni engagement that we have achieved through the use of this portal?
Um, this is Jess Lester. We, we reported on some of the engagement in the Communications Advisory Committee meeting. So a lot of that information is in the presentation that was connected to that committee meeting. But yes, we are seeing engagement and I feel that over, over more time, the longer we use it, the better that engagement will become. We've had some nice interactions with alums who, you know, get our emails and, and, you know, engage in conversation with me and that leads to other things. People, you know, applying or nominating each other for the Hall of Fame. You know, just, and just, you know, reaching out and learning more about what's going on in the school district. So I feel like it has been positive. I want to work to make it a lot better. You know, I, you know, I'm going to work with my assistant to see how we can, we're already talking about some ideas for the future for how we can make it better and sort of, you know, get more people to use the site.
So I, I know that, and I apologize because I have questions available to participate in the Communications Advisory Committee. But I'm recognizing that people are registered with the site, I guess, was still not really clear to me. I guess it's still not really clear to me how frequently they're actually using the site.
I mean, that's, I would agree that we, we have lots of registrations and the challenge will be to get them to learn how to use the site. At this time, we've got, you know, a lot of people registered with accounts, but they don't, they aren't posting content so far. I'm the one who's doing most of the posting of content. So that is something that we definitely need to, to work on, but I think it's a, it's a process. It's not something that happens overnight.
Judy, do you want to leave this off, or do you want to put it to consent?
I mean, if everybody else is comfortable with this, then that's fine to put it off consent. I just, in a time when we're cutting all of our budgets by 10%, I just, I'm not sure that we're gaining most bang for our buck with this one particular purchase. Now, you know, can we just leave it off consent? Because yeah, I'd like to think about it for another week.
That's fair. Okay, so we'll leave this off. Moving on to 5.06, even motion to approve a settlement agreement and release number 405825 in lieu of FAP as recommended by the solicitor. Any questions? Okay, can we move that to consent, please? 5.07, will be a motion to approve settlement agreement and release 250103 in lieu of FAP as recommended by the solicitor. Any questions? Okay, we can move that to consent, please. 5.08, motion to ratify special education contracts and cost of service for the 2020, 2021 school year to meet requirements of students' IEPs throughout of district placements and specials provided to students within our district programs. These contracts appear at this time following legal review and approval. Any questions? Okay, we can move that to consent, please. 5.09, motion to ratify a contract with the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit to continue participating in the virtual high school program for up to 40 seats for one year, beginning July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, at a cost of $5,700, with the potential for purchasing additional seats at a cost of $265 a seat. Any questions? Okay, if we can move that to consent. 5.10, will be a motion to renew Fox Rothschild LLC as district solicitor to include special education, student services, and all legal matters related to district operations in accordance with their free agreement effective July 1, 2020. Any questions? Okay, please move to consent. 5.11, motion to approve the 2020, 2021 Montgomery County Intermediate Unit intergovernmental agreement for shared student services. Any questions? Okay, if we can move to consent, please. Section 5.12, motion to approve the Freedom Valley YMCA and North Penn YMCA rental agreements that represent a 5.26 increase for the 2020, 2021 school year. Any questions? Okay, if we can move to consent, please. 5.13, we've motioned to approve addendum number three to the transportation services agreement as presented. Any questions? Okay, please move to consent. 5.14, motion to approve a turf facility rental agreement with the training center for the PVHS field hockey team during the fall 2020 at a cost of $20,000. Any questions?
So I have, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I posed a question by email today, and I just wanted to bring it up here. I think it's great that we found a place for our field hockey team to practice. I'm very happy to see that. I'm just curious though, you know, if, and I sincerely hope that this is not the case, but if it turns out that we have either a canceled or abbreviated fall sports season, what would happen with this agreement? Would we still be liable for the rental fee? Or is there a provision that, that would account for that?
So I appreciate that question, Dr. Weston. I did look into the agreement and I don't have an answer, but I do know that Mr. Galansky is on tonight. And I wonder if he can respond with an affirmative, or we can research it and find out.
And this is Brian Supers. I mean, certainly I did not review the lease agreement, but I, or rental agreement, but I certainly will report back tomorrow to Dr. Russell whether or not that contingency is appropriately addressed.
Will it require us to leave this off consent until we have a better answer?
I think that's probably a good idea.
Okay. So will this one go to consent? Moving on to section 5.15.
I'm sorry, I have one more question on this. So I just, as I'm reviewing the rental agreement again, it's Tees Golf is, can you just explain the relationship between Tees Golf and the Proving Grounds? Is Tees Golf the company that owns the Proving Grounds, or how is that? How are the entities that are represented in these contracts aligned with each other?
Mr. Galansky, can you speak to that?
I'm not sure where she's saying that.
So the invoice actually was titled Tees Golf Rental. So it implies that the holding company, if you will, the parent company that generated the invoice connected to the Proving Grounds is called Tees Golf. So that, you know, that it's not.
I believe that's the case, yes.
We're not using the Proving Grounds. We're using the Training Center, right? The other one that was closer?
Yeah, it would be a combination of those things.
Oh, right, that's why I'm kind of confused what, it almost seems like we have a couple of different contracts.
The availability, you know, not every, not the training grounds isn't available for the summer practices. So at this point in time, we're looking at the Proving Grounds for the summer practices and, and still exploring other options to see if there are things a little bit closer, a little bit more convenient. These businesses have been closed down as we get closer to opening things up again. You know, these, these groups are back to doing business, so to speak. So, but we want to take the Training Center as much as we can. We're familiar with it. Our parents are athletes. The teams on our schedule are quite comfortable going there. So we would like to continue our regular, our regular season program at that facility.
So Mr. Galansky, then, would the Proving Grounds invoice be altered since right now we've learned that the Training Center is available for the bulk of the season, it sounds like, up to District One, second round of playoffs, I believe, or something like that? And any of you need to revise that Proving Grounds invoice to indicate it's just for the summer practices in August? And then the Training Center is what's being proposed for the season, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, go ahead, Mrs. Lofton, I'm sorry.
The motion needs to be revised, I'm thinking.
Yes, we'll do that. Initially, we wanted to give you the options that Mr. Galansky was investigating and give you a sense of how those costs compared. We'll revise the motion and we'll more clearly delineate what's being proposed for the Proving Grounds versus the Training Center. So we'll correct that this week.
Appreciate that. Okay, so we're going to leave this off. Moving on to section 5.15, it would be a motion to approve the purchase of 330 Dell Latitude 5300 two-in-one laptop computers at a total cost of $303,145 or $918.62 a device. Any questions? If we can move that to consent, please. Section 5.16, motion to approve a three-year lease agreement with Dell Financial at a 0% interest rate as recommended by district administration and subject to legal review. The cost of the lease payment is $101,047.19 a year for three years. Any questions? And if we can move that to consent, then that ends my section.
Hey, thank you very much, Mr. Dorr. Let's move on now to section six on payments of bills, Dr. Weston.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. Item 6.01, comments on the payment of bills. Looking on the chat and the Q and A, I don't see any relevant comments at this point. So we'll move on to item 6.02, the ratification of bills and payroll and authorization of payments. The recommended action will be to ratify payment of bills and payroll as per the lists submitted for this period ending May 31, 2020, and to authorize payment of bills on the check and voucher registers submitted for June. The list of bills for May 2020 is attached to the agenda. Are there any comments or questions on this at this point? Hearing none, that will be an action for next week. Then item 6.03, the approval of the treasurer's report and the financial statements. The recommended, recommended action will be a motion to approve the treasurer's report and financial statements, including the summary of cash and investment accounts as prepared by the administration for the period ending May 31, 2020. This information will be available with the next agenda, and we'll have action on that next week. And that concludes section six.
Thank you very much, Dr. Weston. Moving on to section seven, on professional personnel, Mrs. Evans Rocket. I'm not hearing Mrs. Evans Rocket. Does everyone else hear her?
No.
No.
Mrs. Evans Rocket, could you try unmuting, please? So I see, it looks like you're unmuted, but I'm not actually hearing you. Because am I the only, anyone else?
I can't hear either.
I don't hear her either.
I'm wondering if you want to try to go to the invite and dial in and try accessing over your phone? Let's see, is she? Okay, so I'm, I guess while we are waiting, I will go ahead and start on the section. So for section 7.01, comments on professional personnel. We did not have any comments or specific to the professional personnel section. Section 7.02, this is a new item that was added today. There is acceptances of retirements and resignations as listed. Are there any questions? Okay, no, seeing as there are no questions, let's move on to consent. Sections 7.3, 4, and 5 are all on consent. And that ends section seven, which brings us on to section eight on support personnel. And I will turn it over to Mrs. Roberts.
Thank you, Mrs. Lofton. Section 8.01, any comments on support personnel? I'm not seeing any in the, I'm not seeing any in the Q and A, so we can move on. 8.02 is on consent, approval of leaves of absence. 8.03 is a placeholder for next week, approval of ESY support appointment. 8.04 is requesting action this evening. The motion is to approve the provisional employment of the 2020 summer support staff as listed pending fulfillment of all statutory requirements, and I so move.
Second, Matthew Dorr.
You're on mute.
Mrs. Lofton, you're on mute.
Okay, let's try this again. We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
8.05, approval of memos of understanding. The motion is to approve a memos of understanding between the Perkyomen Valley School District and Perkyomen Valley Educational Support Personnel and Maintenance Custodial. Any questions? Can we move to consent, please?
Mrs. Roberts, all right, I would like to suggest that continued conversation occur in executive session before the board moves this to consent, if that would be all right?
Anything?
I'm sorry, did you pose that question to me or to Mrs. Roberts, Dr. Russell?
It's a suggestion that we hold up moving this motion to consent until after executive session. If that would be okay with the board?
Oh, that'd be okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, and that concludes section eight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Roberts. And now section nine on governance, Dr. House.
Thank you. Item 9.01, comments on governance, I did not see any in the Q and A. So I'm assuming there's no comments. Item 9.02 is a first reading on the following policies. 004.1, student membership and 121 field trips. Any comments?
Um, I have a quick question.
Okay.
Wondering, on the student membership, I saw that it changed from class officers instead of the student form. And I was just wondering why. I just didn't know, I wasn't aware that that was happening.
It actually, as we understand, the reference is to, is to student form as opposed to class officers or student council, excuse me. So the reference to the student leadership group that actually votes for board representatives was incorrect in policy. And the revision suggested is to correct that reference so that it's up to date.
Oh, okay, perfect, thank you.
You bet.
Okay, any other comments? All right, item 9.03 will be a motion to hold a second reading and adopt the following policies. 006.1, 11, 119, 204, 219, 223, 224, 228, 335, and 626. Is, should we put that on consent? Anybody have concerns? Okay, I'll move then to have that put on consent if no one has any objections. Item 9.04 is a motion to retire policy 225, student relations with police, and instead reference policy 805.1, relations with law enforcement agencies, which encompasses all district relations with law enforcement based on the current memos of understanding. Any comments? Anybody have objection to moving that to consent as well? Okay, let's make it so. Item 9.05, and is this something we're taking action on tonight, or is this going to wait till next week?
I think it can wait until next week.
All right, wasn't sure. So it's a motion to appoint Amy Hurd as board treasurer for one year, for a one-year term from July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021. Comments? Okay, seeing none. This is a motion to, it's, I'm sorry, item 9.06 is approval of PSBA membership for 2020, 2020 and 2021. It's a motion to approve Pennsylvania School Boards Association's 2020, 2021 standard membership package plus policy maintenance and administrative regulations at a cost of $15,509.42. Pardon me. Any comments, questions? Should we move that to consent? Should we move that to consent? Okay, seeing no objection, let's do so. Item 9.07 is a motion to appoint up to three P V S D voting delegates to participate in the P V P S B A delegate assembly to be held Saturday, November 7th, 2020, at Mountain View Middle School, Cumberland Valley School District, or via Zoom. So I'm assuming we want to discuss that one, if not tonight, then next week, to figure out who those three people might be.
So for this item, we actually need three, up to three board members who are interested, can state their interest in participating in this meeting, and then we can vote on them next week. So is anyone at this time interested in putting forth their name to be included as voting delegate for P S B A?
Judy, it's Matthew Door. I'd like to be included, please.
Okay, great. So, Mr. Door? Anyone else interested?
I'd like Sarah Evans-Brock, sorry, Sarah Evans-Brock as P S B A liaison. I'll participate as well.
So, Mrs. Evans-Brockett?
And this is Laura White. I will participate as well.
Fantastic.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, item 9.08 is a motion to approve the resolution for critical support and mandating relief benefiting public schools and students in Pennsylvania. Comments? Okay, should we move that to consent, or do we want to leave that out? Okay, seeing no objections, we'll move to consent. And then item 9.9.09 will be a motion to approve the statement condemning harassment and violence against black people. Is this something we're waiting for next week, or are we taking action tonight?
So I would be comfortable taking action on this tonight. I think we might want to do a little bit of editing first, which I know doesn't give people a lot of time to think about. I know this has been a very quickly moving agenda item. However, I also think it's very timely for us to state something at this time. I know I've seen a lot of different statements coming out from a lot of different places. And so since we are together this evening, if we are comfortable and willing to move on it tonight, then I think that would be, that would be something that I would support. But I do think there is a couple of things in here that I've gotten some questions about that I'd like to bring up for discussion. And actually, Dr. Russell, if you could open it, and we can discuss some of the language. And so the question that I've gotten about this is, um, in the second paragraph, at the, it's about halfway through. I'm sorry. Yes, and we specifically call out our support for black male students. And I've gotten a couple of questions about whether or not that's language that we want to be using in this. And, you know, I went, so just to give everybody and to give our community some context, this idea was shared with me that we would want to look, put out a statement. And it's an idea that I supported, and some language from another statement was shared with me. I also researched various other statements that have been released by different organizations and obtained input from several different board members as well to ensure that we're putting together a statement that reflects the sentiments of our board, and is what we as a board want to say. So some, several of the statements that I've looked at did specifically call out black male students. And I do believe that some of the, um, issues that are facing our society are specific to black male students. I also think that there are issues more broadly with diversity in all marginalized groups. So when I was writing this, it was intentional that the rest of the statement talks about discrimination and diversity in broader terms. And I'm wondering if keeping something in here that is specific to black male students, but maybe just changes the wording a little bit, addresses that concern. And so instead of saying specifically our black male students, we have it say especially our black male students. And if that would address the concerns of the individuals who had questioned that phrasing.
So, Mrs. Lofton, this is Mr. Door. Excuse me, full transparency, I was the one who actually, I was one of the ones who sent that. I had a problem with it. I actually like adding especially versus specifically. I think that word sends a clear message, so I'm okay with that.
I'm actually not okay with that. I feel like, this is Laura White. My feeling is, and the reason that I have an issue with that particular language is because I feel like our statement regarding this particular cultural climate issue should be reflective of our feelings for our district and our position with regards to the community that makes up Perkyum Valley. And I think that what Perkyum Valley has taken steps towards, but is still really falling short in a lot of ways of achieving, is acknowledgement and equity and inclusion for all colors. And my concern with calling out specifically or especially quote-unquote "black males" really diminishes black females, obviously. And then also all of the other non-white community members that feel persecution, discrimination, and feel singled out and treated unequally. And with regards to a race comment or a race, you know, a race climate or a race statement in today's world, we need to make sure that all of our minorities understand that they are supported, protected, and ultimately have a safe haven within our halls and our schools. This is, this is not about the black man in the sense of what we need to do by way of ending discrimination in our district. All discrimination, because the folks that have discrimination and hatred towards black people in this country also have issues with other minorities. And, and that to me speaks, at least from, from, you know, where I sit, that is my opinion. So I have an issue with us putting out a collective statement of nine when, when this doesn't truly reflect my personal feelings on the matter.
Um, I have a quick comment. I am absolutely fine with saying especially the black students who are specifically that population is feeling the violence lately. But I do have an issue with singling out males, because if we are reflective of the issues that are prevailing in our society today, it's all of the black community, not just males. Especially if we're reflecting on George Floyd, there's also Breonna Taylor and so many more names that aren't specific to one gender. So taking that out for me, I think would better reflect what our school would like to say about this issue.
I would tend to agree with, with what the young lady just said. The, the fact that we call out black students in, in particular or especially, I don't think that should be taken as marginalizing any other students or families of color. As a matter of fact, we say we want our families of color to know that we love and value them. But the situation that we're facing right now was, I think, you know, the, the, the spark that set the fire off was an outrage that was committed on a black male. And, and as, and as Maggie rightly points out, that he, that's not the only incident that's happened recently. There are others committed against other black males, against black females. There, there have been, you know, so many things that have been happening. And this was finally, this, this last thing, the straw that broke the camel's back, so to speak. So I, I, I don't have a problem with, with specifying or saying in particular or especially black students or African-American students. It does not, I don't think, marginalizes other individuals of color.
And if I could just say, I think that it's very important that we do specify the black male student, because I know after working in several, in several places of business that are majority black, even the females, even the mothers are especially concerned about their sons, their boyfriends, their husbands. I think that this issue is specific to black males. And so it's, it, while being inclusive of the entire community of color, I think that our black male students need to know that they have allies with them within their school community. And I don't have a problem specifying black males, because they're the ones with the big problem. There are, you know, very definitely injustices that are put upon females of color. I understand that. But black males are more likely to be killed by a police officer than to catch COVID-19, if that puts it in any kind of perspective. I think that black males have a specific problem. I think that we need to recognize that black males have a specific problem. We need to talk about the fact that black males have a specific problem. And while being inclusive of the entire community, they are of particular concern even to other people of color. So I don't have a problem specifying or calling out black males, because they're the ones that have the biggest issue.
I, I concur with, with Dr. Weston and Mrs. Roberts as well. I mean, this is prof, professionally for years as a political scientist, this falls right into what I have spent years publishing in peer review. And while other groups are most definitely affected, and we acknowledge that, the majority that face this problem are African-American males. And I don't think we're, we're so much calling them out as, as pointing out to the larger community that, that that's the reality. You know, and I, I say that too as someone who taught for a while at St. Gabriel's Hall. You know, I had students who were nothing but bloods and crypts, and, and most of them left there and died in the streets. I mean, like, no bones about it. It, I, I think that language, you know, something akin to it should stay in there.
I'm in agreement with Mr. Hollis, and I do like the idea of changing the words to especially our black male students.
I'll throw my support in too. I initially shared the statement with Mrs. Lofton, asking us to put out one. And when I shared it, I said that I wanted to make sure that we included something specific about our black students. So I, I, that's what this is about right now. And as Mr. West, or Dr. Weston said, I don't think it marginalizes other students of color.
This is Rena. I have just a more general comment about the statement itself. You know, all day today, I've gotten statements from pretty much every business I've ever dealt with or every organization I've been a part of, everyone's putting out a statement. And my general feeling is, while I understand that people want to do something, they want to say something, we really need to focus on us as a district and what our mission is and what our goal is, and not just throw out these words and these generalizations. You know, I had asked Mrs. Lofton to include the part about words not being enough and to really focus on what are some of our initiatives and what are we committing to do. And I think that we need to kind of tighten this up and really focus on that, because otherwise it's just going to be glossed over, and it's going to come across as every other generic statement that I've seen, about 100 of today. And if we're saying that as a school board, this is what we believe, then we need to really focus on what can we do?
I, I agree with you, Rena. I just feel like, in general, discrimination and prejudice has been a problem this year in multiple instances in, in our schools. And I just feel like, although this is a blout, although we're able to have this conversation that we should have been having, you know, years ago, right now, through circumstance, and understanding statistics specifically surrounding black males, the, the larger issue as it pertains to Perkyum Valley and what I want to see happen in our classrooms and in our buildings is, is actual tangible experiences and change. And I feel like if we're going to issue a statement collectively, we should acknowledge, on one hand, the national climate. And in that instance, okay, if you'd like to say especially black males, so be it. But the bigger issue of discrimination in our halls and in our buildings, because our community is demographically divided, is a problem that bothers me pretty, pretty, on, pretty, pretty regularly, and I'm a white woman. So, you know, I, I feel like a statement without action or an action plan or a commitment of, of what actions will be taken. And I, and I do commend the, the district and all of the work that's been done with the Equity and Inclusion meetings. And we have absolutely been taking steps towards creating more diversity and more diverse experiences. But, you know, especially prior to the shutdown, you know, it was our, in our hallways, it was our Asian community that was being targeted. And, and so when you look at a global picture of prejudice, my concern is that, yes, the problem is towards black males. Yes, we have an issue of, of needing to take a stand in supporting the black males in our community and their families. But we also have an obligation as stewards of, of humanity and elected officials within the community to make sure that no one of minority of any kind or disability feels less than or feels subject to, you know, discrimination and hatred. And so, and so that's the point that I'm, you know, and I'm emotional about it, because it's something that weighs heavily on my mind daily. And, and it, it's almost, it's frustrating to me that it has to get to this point where we need to, to make a statement on something that, that is, it's just a basic, it should be a basic human right. There should, we shouldn't have to be still having this conversation, you know, 50 years, you know, 400 years later. It shouldn't be anymore. And so here we are, and, and now what? So, so if we're going to make a statement and we're going to put all of our names on it, I, I just want to feel comfortable in the fact that we are truly all on the same page and, and that we should be examples, you know, publicly, and, and also on social media platforms. I feel like that's a big piece of it. You know, who we represent ourselves as publicly is, is kind of a, I think it's a calling card of, of who we are in the community and, and what, what we really want in the long haul for, you know, for our students and the, and the initiatives we're going to support. So, you know, a statement should be made. I think it must be made. But I also think that we need to have real decisions and real discussions about what tangible actions we're going to take.
So I'm curious, you know, in, in working on developing this. So I'm curious, you know, in in working on developing this, those sentiments came up that, you know, it's not just, but words are not enough. It's, you know, offering thoughts and prayers in essence, doesn't really fix the problem. And trying to think about what it is as a school board, what action could we actually take? And so I what I was thinking, you know, and so what I put together here was, you know, we really and this is part of, you know, maybe I was being a little very direct in the discussion of the discipline code. But in the meetings that we've had with the partners in for Equity and Inclusion over the past two years since the group was formed, we hear repeatedly from students just over and over and over again that they are spoken to in ways that are simply unacceptable. But they don't feel like anything happens and they don't feel like anything changes. And that's really disconcerting to me. I mean, we have policies on the book that we as a board have established on non-discrimination. We we have a policy on diversity. But I feel like sometimes follow through isn't necessarily always there in the ways that we would hope it would be. And I I don't know entirely what the answer is, but what I do know is we have really thoughtful conversations in our partners in equity for Equity and Inclusion meetings. But it's it's, you know, the last sentence here. It's two or three dozen people who are preaching to the choir and we need to have those conversations integrated into our curriculum. It has to be part of the learning experience for all of our students. That, you know, and materials are out there. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. And I feel like this was part of our conversation when we first started talking about the elementary specials on wellness. That we wanted to be addressing issues such as bullying and diversity and multiculturalism. And, you know, and how, what is prejudice? How do you combat prejudice? What's, you know, just all of those basic things? And, you know, I feel like there's so much that we wanted to pack into Wellness Initiative. I'm not sure that those goals remained at the forefront of that discussion. And, you know, I just, I feel like we keep talking about this, but I'm not sure that we're actually seeing things integrated into the building. So so for example, I know there was a parent group that had put together a book or a list of diverse books to read for elementary students. And instead of incorporating that into the curriculum, and this was what was told to me by parents, but teachers were given, oh, here's a list if you want some diverse books. You know, it can't just be, oh, here's something that we're doing on the side to be taking care of it. We need to really be integrating it so that it's a part of every student's experience to understand, to embrace diversity and understand the richness of all the different groups that are represented in our community. And I completely agree. It goes way beyond race. It goes, you know, for LGT communities are, you know, people of, you know, all kinds of different backgrounds are treated in ways that are not right. And it and it's it's difficult. You know, I don't think that the answers are sitting right in front of it. I don't think it's an easy problem to fix, but I think that we do need to as a board come out with a statement to say, we want to see movement in this direction. And, you know, I don't know that the idea that I came up with as far as what is the movement that we want to see, if those are the best steps that we could be directing our administration to take. And I'd certainly welcome feedback as far as what are some other ways that we think we can tackle this problem?
Well, I can I can I I appreciate the next, I appreciate the paragraph that points to the fact that we already have district policies of non-discrimination and inclusion and diversity. So so that we've addressed that. But, you know, is there any way that we can put our money where our mouth is? And I mean, can we issue this particular statement? And then perhaps issue a statement to the to the teachers, to the admin, you know, to the to to the people who actually have the hands-on experience with the students and that see this stuff. Because when you see it, you have to stop it. That's the problem is that you can have all the policies in the universe. But if you don't, but if you don't follow through and actually stop it when you see it and use it as a a a point for conversation. And it's like, whoa, stop right there. We're going to deal with it right now. And and I don't care what class it's in. It does, I don't care if it's social studies. I don't care if it's English. I don't care. I don't care if it's math. If you see it, you have to stop it. So if there is a way that we can follow up this particular statement, pointing out that we already have policies in place indicating that this is our district policy. But if we put out a statement also to the teachers and the people who have hands-on face-to-face experience with the students and say, we expect you to stop this when you see it. I don't know if that's something we can do. I don't know if that's something that we can legally do. But you know, if we don't put the expectation out there, if we don't say, this is what we expect of you, then we haven't done anything except shoot our mouths off and make a lovely statement.
Beth, I think the part of the issue that that exists is that we are in, you know, we 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 are who we are. We're in suburban Pennsylvania in a majority white community where, I mean, truth be told, it without, I mean, to be blunt, diversity and equity is not valued in every household.
Oh, well, that's
And some of it, and some of it is unconscious. And a lot of it is unconscious.
Absolutely.
You know, as a as a board, as a board, we should be putting out a statement that says that collectively as elected officials representing Perqiaman Valley's community, we are holding, you know, the district accountable to provide our students with safe spaces. Now, how they determine to do that, that's on them. But they need to come up with some solutions because the amount of information that I gathered with regards to discrimination in the last couple of months is to me unacceptable. One is too many. One is too many. So so what are the action steps? That is the accountability piece of it.
I am completely in agreement with you. Absolutely. But we can't dictate what goes on in people's homes. We can dictate what goes on in school. We can say, this is not acceptable in school. You want to call somebody the N-word, go home and do it. But don't do it here. It's not acceptable here. And unfortunately, with social media and all kinds of other stuff going on, it the the two worlds tend to bleed into each other. But the fact is that we have a specific venue. We have a school. And it is our obligation to create a safe space and a supportive space and a space that has these kids back in school. No matter what their parents teach them, no matter what their parents say, no matter what we can or cannot do as far as their home life and their neighborhoods are concerned. And I understand that. The valley ain't woke. Okay, I mean, I've said that more than once. The valley ain't woke. We live in white man city. And I understand that, but we are in charge of what goes on in school. And that being the case, it's not, I mean, it's discouraging that we can't change their home life. It's it's discouraging that we can't enlighten their parents, but we can't. All we can do is create safe space and respectful space and supportive space in school.
So I ask Lori, Mrs. Lori Smith to make sure that in the wellness curriculum and the different curriculums that we have that are moving forward, that this is something that right, you're right. We've been, as a district, we've been looking at this issue for years. And I think we're continually moving towards something and trying to get better at this. Can't we maybe ask her and task her with, how is this being implemented in the curriculums? If it's not, how can it be inserted and how can it be measured? Can we see measurable outcome to, are we having some success reaching the students? That would be my thought for possibly a plan moving forward that's a little more direct.
I would, I'd actually take this a step further because as as I listen, you know, we can have all the policies we want. And we should. I'm not arguing against that at all, but we're expecting students to respond to this. And and I'll be blunt. I sit here and I think my son's heading into a senior year. And as a kid who grew up in Philadelphia, who lived in DC for for a number of years, you know, and 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 saw a lot of this stuff up close, it it was literature that transformed our minds, you know, because you can identify with that. My son is in his senior year. I know he's never read Ralph Ellison or James Baldwin or Albert Murray or, you know, and and so on and so on and so on. The closest he's come to anything that has engaged this question is Shakespeare's Othello. One thing I know in the entire time, and then I look at my middle schooler who was in eighth grade and and I'll be blunt, I I was not impressed with the social studies curriculum and how it engaged the question of slavery. It, you know, as a parent, I just have to be blunt. If we expect students to do this and we're saying as a board, we have to step up, you know, usually as a board member, I my attitude is fly at thirty thousand feet and let the teachers teach and and administration worry about curriculum. But if we're really serious about this, then the question I have to ask is, I have one child who has nearly gone through PV for twelve years. And I can't recall much that engaged him on this issue. So as a parent and as a board member, as someone, you know, and listening to my fellow board members saying, we have to transform, we have to to change the situation, well, that means we have to give the students tools. And it's one thing to talk about it in health class and all that, but but it still kind of remains in that 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 sphere where they can kind of put it off to the side. When they actually read something that engages them and it's back to that that question, you know, that was raised, I'm sorry, I can't remember which of my colleagues here did it of, you know, we bought these books for the elementary level that deal with diversity and they're over here and if students want to read them, they can read them. And I'm not saying this stuff should take over the curriculum, but my son's reading The Great Gatsby now. Why is it in his junior English class, he hasn't read even just an essay by Baldwin, Ellison, Richard Wright, Albert Murray? I could go, you want Asian authors? You want Hispanic authors? You want Native American? I could go there too. So my point is simply this, that if we're we're really going to be serious about this, I I think there has to be, again, not over the top, but but some intentionality of really asking what tools are we giving students that that they can integrate into their own personal understanding? You know, again, it's one thing you can tell them it's wrong. But until they have, and and this kind of speaks, I think, to to some of the other stuff that's been said, they don't have these direct experiences, many of them. You know, they didn't grow up in this sort of environment. I mean, I grew up in a city block that there were fifteen different languages spoken. And I realize that's atypical. So we have to give students things that they that that could be anchors for them. And and honestly, just looking at my own children, it it's come more from me and my wife than it's come from any school curriculum.
To provide some perspective from a student perspective, I I agree with Dr. Hollis. And students currently aren't really given the tools that they need. Like Dr. Hollis said, most of my growing up with a diverse background has come from my mom and my parents. And unfortunately, as mentioned, that doesn't happen a lot, which is why we have to teach in schools. And the amount of times that I have heard a white student say the N-word is completely unacceptable. But they won't listen to me and they're not going to listen to their other students. And if it's what's being taught in their household, there's no way we can control that. But there is what we can control in within our school district and with our teachers. And I think a really great way to start this is not only adding it to our curriculum, which absolutely should be, but to open up a discussion with the black students of our community and the other students of color and the ones who are marginalized and discriminated against, specifically through the PV Partners for Equity and Inclusion committee that we have and listening to them and their concerns about what we need to change and what we can do as a district to help them. Because I want to change the fact that students say that and I I can't really change their mind, but I can't. Like I can't do that alone, if that makes sense.
Ms. McGovern, you're brilliant. You're absolutely brilliant. Because that's what we need to do. We need to give students opportunities to listen to one another and to be guided by teachers who are on the same page and who know and who feel passionately about this particular subject. The kids, it is not the responsibilities of the students to figure this out for themselves. We put enough on them. It's we as adults, and I'm talking about the lunch lady, I'm talking about the custodian, I'm talking about the teachers, I'm talking about the administration, I'm talking about the adults in the room. The adults in the room have to help students the way who feel the way Ms. McGovern does because it's it's too big a job for her by herself. She's right. She's right. We need to bake, we need to step in and we need to assist. And we need to absolutely positively make sure that those two district policies that are listed in this statement are absolutely and positively upheld every single time by every single adult in the room. So, you you know, I mean, this is why I'm advocating to perhaps sending something in addition to this statement specifically to the adults, specifically to the employees of Perqiaman Valley, indicating to them that this is a problem and this is a problem that's not acceptable to us as a board. And that we expect that their students have this dealt with, with them, with their guidance. And I, like I said, I don't know if that's something that's legal. I don't know if that's something that intrudes on their on their respective contract or whatever. But just as decent human beings, people need to step up and listen to the children, listen to the students. Listen to our black students, listen to our white students who are struggling to make things better. Listen to all of them and give them a venue to be able to talk to one another and listen to one another. Because that's the crux of the problem. The crux of the problem is that nobody's listening to what the others are saying. And that being the case, it's going to continue to be a problem. So we need to give them as much opportunity to talk to one another and listen to one another and to express these feelings to one another as much as we possibly can. We are the adults. It should not be on Ms. McGovern to try and get the rest of the valley woke. Seriously. And I appreciate what you do. I appreciate what you do. Thank you so much for doing it.
Thank you. I can't possibly begin to represent what the students say, which is why truly, if you if you want to know how to help them, you have to ask them and open up those discussion areas for them to understand and discuss. Thank you.
So I think that was very productive discussion and I think that goes back to, I guess, just, you know, some of it goes back to our discipline policy. Where where are we feeling now with regard to this statement? Do we want to move forward with it with some of the suggested, does anyone want to offer any other edits to it? some of the suggested, does anyone want to offer any other edits to it? Well, I guess my first question is, do we want to move forward with this tonight? And if so, are there any specific edits that we want to make other than changing specifically to especially before moving forward with it?
I think if we can take action on this tonight, we should take action on this tonight. We are seeing the situations escalating by the minute. And I think if we don't take action tonight, we lose an opportunity to make a statement. So that's, that's just my thought.
I agree with Dr. Weston. I would like to see that, that word switched to especially. But other than that, I'd be happy to move forward this evening. I think we need to.
Okay. Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Then I'm going to go move.
Go ahead, Judy. I'm sorry. I'm.
No, I was going to, so if you had something else to add, please.
No, I was just going to ask whether or not I had to make the motion to amend it or whether you did it or, you know. Ryan, tell us what to do.
Just making a motion to approve the statement as amended.
Okay, okay.
So I have a question. Are we just changing that one word or are we going to have a chance to vote on a final amended version?
I might, well.
Do you want, what else do you want to change?
Well, I think I could sit here and talk for an hour, which I'm not sure if it's possible at a public meeting. But I, there's just a few little things here and there. Again, I feel like we need to condense it and really be focused on what we are committing to as a board and as a district. I feel like it's right now, just a little bit too broad in not really talking about us as a board and what we're committing to. But if we need to get this out, you know, I'm not going to let that hold us up. But I, I would like to look at it one more time before it's published anywhere.
So, how about we?
Do we just need, do we need to approve the, the act of actually putting a statement out? Is, is that what this is about? I, I guess some, I mean, listen, I'm new to the board, obviously, this year. So I, I'm just confused as to why an edit conversation would be happening in a public, at a public board meeting as opposed to us formulating a statement and then approving a finished statement during the meeting.
Well, a draft version was sent to the board to individually provide comment on yesterday. And, you know, again, this was all turned around within 24 hours. So, it's difficult to be timely and also operate within the constraints of sunshine law, which requires us, if we want to discuss something as a board, to do it publicly. And also come up with wording that we're comfortable with. So, it, it's certainly not in the process. I, you know, as a professional writer, I know that editing by committee is often challenging. You know, I've, I've tried to seek input from board members as to what wording they wanted in here. You know, and as, after a certain point, having nine people try to edit a single document really does get challenging.
So Judy, if you don't mind me interrupting, I, I absolutely agree with what Mrs. White said and Dr. Kohler said. There's nothing stopping us from issuing this statement with edits and then having a follow-up with what we're going to do about it. That's just my opinion.
I could concur with that too. Dr. Hallis.
I can also, Kim Mears.
I agree with Dr. Weston. I don't want to lose the moment. And I think that it's important to say something so that we're setting the example to our students that this is the way we feel and that we have their backs. And we can expand on this at a later point if we have to. But I, we, we've got to say something. We've got to. It's been a week.
Not that I'm of voting status, but I agree.
So, am I making a motion here?
Please.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the statement condemning harassment and violence against black people as amended. So moved.
Second, Matthew Dorr.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Here ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hallis. That brings us on to section 10 on closing items. And 10.01 comments from the audience are accepted on any topic. The first comment is from Ellie Peterson, who writes, it will be very disappointing if the alum base, I'm sorry, alma base alumni software is not approved since this was initiated through a foundation grant last year. Last one year is sufficient time to make, or insufficient time to make a determination over whether funding for something as global as this database should be scrapped, given that funding is coming out of existing budgeted expenditures. The next comment is from Robert Ligon of Perkioman Township, who writes, considering that the board statement is only happening because of current events, I can fully support the statement as only the especially black males. You may want to consider changing statement from black to African-American to be more sensitive. And a second comment from Robert Ligon, Perkioman Township reads, a wider statement weakens the support toward black males. And a third comment from Mr. Robert Ligon of Perkioman Township reads, I agree with Dr. Hallis. Diversity needs to be actively a part of all parts of the curriculum. Black history is our history and not just for February. And that concludes the public comments that were submitted through the Q and A. So that brings us to section 10.02, comments from board members.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate this statement so much. I really do. We are a homogenous, all-white, crazy, you know, community. And this is not an issue that we necessarily deal with on the day-to-day. But it is something we should deal with on the day-to-day because we're sending our white kids out into a world of people who are not like them. And we need to prepare them and, and keep them sensitive to, to what they're going to meet in the world. We need to educate them to what they're going to meet in the world. So I appreciate this statement. Thank you, Mr. Dorr, for recognizing the fact that these issues are important and we need to start talking about them, even though we're in white world.
Okay, so hearing the further comments, I will move forward with adjourning the meeting. Before I adjourn, I do want to announce that we have an executive session scheduled for immediately following the meeting for the purposes of safety and negotiation. Thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful evening. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.